All right, I'll call to order the Board of Supervisors meeting for Tuesday, August 5th, to order. Please rise as you're able and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and I will recognize the Township Manager to give us the meeting procedures and the call to roll.
Thank you, Chair. This meeting has been properly advertised in accordance with the Pennsylvania Sunshine Act as a hybrid meeting with the option to attend virtually and in person here in the main meeting room. And if you are attending virtually using the WebEx platform and wish to speak on behalf of an agenda item, please say your name, municipality of residence, and the topic you wish to speak on when the Chair calls on you. If you are attending in person with us in the main meeting room and wish to speak on behalf of an agenda item, please address the Board at the podium and state your name, municipality of residence, and the topic you wish to speak on. Members of the public attending using WebEx platform are asked to remain muted during the meeting to prevent any ambient noise from disrupting the meeting. If a member of the public is acknowledged by the Chair, they may unmute their microphone for their question or comment. Secondly, Board members are asked to indicate their name when motioning or seconded in a motion so that the minutes may accurately reflect the action taken. And finally, a rule call of the Board of Supervisors will now be taken to ensure that there are audio and interactions using the WebEx meeting platform. Please indicate that you are here when your name is called. Jeremy Thompson.
Here.
Amari Patterson.
Here.
Patty Stevens.
Here.
Matt Heller. Lisa Strickland. Chair, you have a quorum.
All right, thank you. Does any members of the Board have any modifications to the agenda they'd like to bring forward? Yes, Mr. Patterson?
Yes, Mr. Chair, if we can move under new business, item four, if we can bring that up to item one, just so that we can make sure we get members of our public in and out at their reasonable time.
So still in new business, but starting with number one and then the consent agenda, or?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, please.
And you're good with that as well, Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
All right, we will do that. Next, we'll have announcements and proclamations. We have a proclamation to recognize the American Beech Tree at 1460 Blue Course Drive as a tree of significance. Did we have anyone from that property in attendance tonight? All right. With that said, I will read the proclamation. Whereas the Ferguson Township Board of Supervisors recognizes the ecological, historical, and aesthetic value of trees and supports the preservation of significant heritage trees in accordance with Chapter 25 of the Ferguson Township Code of Ordinances, whereas pursuant to Section 25408 of the Township Code, the Board of Supervisors is authorized to designate certain trees as significant trees based on unique or noteworthy characteristics such as species, rarity, exceptional size, form, or contribution to the township's natural heritage. And whereas the Greystone Township Homeowners Association Board has submitted a nomination for a mature American Beech Tree, Fergus grindefolia, located at 1460 Blue Course Drive, State College, Pennsylvania, 16801. And whereas the American Beech Tree, a stately and prominent native species exemplifies the type of tree that is increasingly rare within the township and whose preservation is of special importance due to its visual distinction, environmental contribution, potential future significance. And whereas the township anticipates that this tree may qualify in the future as a heritage tree and recognizes a growing contribution to the character and natural landscape of Ferguson Township. Now, therefore, it be proclaimed that the Ferguson Township Board of Supervisors hereby recognizes and designates the American Beech Tree located 1460 Blue Course Drive as a significant tree in accordance with Chapter 25, Section 25, 408 of the Ferguson Township Code, commends the Greystone Township Homeowners Association Board for their thoughtful stewardship and nomination of this valuable natural asset, encourages continued community engagement in identifying and preserving notable trees within Ferguson Township, and looks forward to evaluating this tree for potential designation as a heritage tree as it continues to mature and thrive. And with that said, I will entertain a motion to adopt the proclamation.
This is Patty.
This is Amari, second. And we got a motion by Ms. Stevens, seconded by Mr. Patterson. All those, any further discussion on this? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and opposed, say no. All right. The proclamation is proclaimed this fifth day of August 2025 by the Ferguson Township Board of Supervisors. All right. Next, we will have a public comment. So at this time, we do welcome members of the public to address the Board of Supervisors on matters not on the agenda. We ask each resident to keep their comments to about five minutes and to state their name and municipality of residence when speaking. And we will start here in the room.
Good evening. My name's Tom Songer, and I'm here this evening with a prospective tenant of mine, Amy Muttonen, who's the owner of A&M Corrective Skincare. The reason we're here is to discuss the zoning appeal, which I made on behalf of Amy after the Ferguson Township zoning officer denied Amy's use in my building, which is located in Bristol Park in the IRD zone. I emailed each of you a copy of the zoning appeal along with a list of emails that have been sent by Amy and me to the zoning officer, and also the Township Manager and Township Solicitor were copied on all those emails. My architect, Al Drabka, sent the zoning officer an email dated June 26, 2025, with a zoning permit application attached, in which he stated that the tenant was AM Corrective Skincare and that the new use is a skincare consultation business. Al and I received the denial of the zoning permit application in an email from the zoning officer on July 15. The zoning officer stated, based on the website and the labels on the plan, this appears to fall under the personal service establishment. Because this property is zoned IRD, that use is not permitted as the code is written. Should there be a future change to the code or if you have updated information that would allow the use, in parentheses, such as the use is instead proposed to be a medical clinic or other permitted use, then please let me know, and I'm glad to discuss. The zoning officer also stated, for reference, personal service establishment's definition is a business which services are offered to an individual relating to the hygiene or appearance of an individual, such as, but not limited to barber shops, hair salons, manicures, massage therapy, health spas, weight loss centers, tanning salons, health replacement, hair replacement, or removal facilities and the like. Amy and I would like to resolve this matter amicably, and we've asked for meetings with the Township Zoning Officer, Manager, and Solicitor, and to date, we have not received a response to our request. This time, I'd like to ask Amy to tell you about her business.
Hi, my name is Amy Muttonen. I'm the owner of AM Skincare, which is a small wellness-based skin health studio that's been operating in the township since 2019. We are looking, we were looking to move our business to Ferguson Township to better serve our growing clients. I'm here today to, because Tom asked me to speak on my behalf. At AM Skincare, we provide non-invasive corrective treatments that support the body's natural healing processes. This includes improving circulation, calming inflammation, restoring skin barrier function, and supporting collagen production, especially for clients struggling with chronic skin conditions such as acne, rosacea, and scarring. We do not offer cosmetic and nature services. We are not a walk-in facial or spa treatment facility. Each session begins with a full health history, skin analysis, and personalized strategy based on clients' individual needs. Most of our clients come to us after seeing dermatologists and other providers that have still not found lasting solutions. We are trying to bridge the gap through education, holistic care, and advanced skin science. We use technologies that you'll also find in clinical dermatology and plastic surgical offices, such as microcurrent LED light therapy and oxygen infusion. We focus on long-term skin health and whole-body wellness, not temporary results or cosmetic. After receiving the zoning denial, I was disappointed, mostly because I didn't receive a conversation or the opportunity to express what we do. I'm not from the State College area. I'm actually from, I moved here from Washington State. So all of this township and zoning stuff is new to me, and I'm kind of learning as we go. But I thought this area would be a great, a great place to bring my business. And after speaking with Tom and him showing me a location, I was excited about it. So I guess I'm just here to tell you what I do, what we do. I employ a nurse. I have a nursing background myself, and I also have two other estheticians that were both educated at a local college CPI for aesthetics. So we do offer more along the lines of a medical practice, but we do not operate under a medical director at this time. So I just wanted to share what I do and what our practice is, and hopefully it's something that I can bring to Ferguson Township. If not, I will continue where we're at. Thank you.
Do you want to have any questions, baby?
We don't have any questions. We did receive your comments, and I believe everyone from the Solicitor to the Manager and the Board has been, has received those.
Well, as Amy mentioned, she is a professional practice. She's licensed by the state, as are her other employees. She's currently located in Lamont, Pennsylvania. She would like to move her business to Ferguson Township. I have in our office portfolio many people who are consultants. They may be psychiatrists, psychologists, medical doctors, engineers, architects. They all classify themselves as consultants. And that's really what Amy is. She's first and foremost a consultant, as she indicated. She starts with an interview of the patient to find out what the issues are, and then she devises a medical treatment scheme to treat that patient's problems. And many times, her clients are referred to her by dermatologists and other doctors. So she's not a personal service establishment such as a haircut or barber shop or a salon or something like that. And to compare her business to that without asking for information from her, I think is a big mistake to have made. And this is a common problem that has been ongoing in Ferguson Township for many, many years. And most of the time, professionals like myself, we just ignore it and we go on and make the appeal to the zoning hearing board, and then hopefully the appeal is granted. We're trying to save, change that perception that Ferguson Township is not consumer-friendly. And that can be not only business people, it can be residential people who need a zoning permit for whatever. But I can tell you, I've heard the same story for many, many years, and we would like to work with the township to change that perception. And recently, I met with Centris, and we talked about perhaps ways of doing that. So at this time, though, we were left with no option because we couldn't get a meeting. We were left with no option except appeal the zoning officer's decision to the zoning hearing board. So that's going to take place on August 26. Okay? Now, Amy's business, like any business, we're on a timeline to get things done. We don't have three, four, or five months of businessperson to go and prolong the decision, okay? We thought, and Albert thought, my architect, that this business fits within the IRD zone, which if you look at the allowable uses in the IRD zone, it's fairly broad, okay? And we would like to ask that we can have a meeting with the zoning officer, the Township Manager and Solicitor to discuss this. If we could get a positive response that would allow Amy's business to be here, then we would withdraw our zoning appeal. But if we can't have that meeting and get a positive response, then we have no choice but to go to the Ferguson Township zoning hearing board. So that's where we're at. We appreciate your time. If you have any comments or questions or advice for us, now please let us know.
Thank you so much for your comment. Because we have a zoning hearing board appeal on the record, the Board is appreciative of your comments, and I am happy to share with you that I appreciate that you've brought your perspective applicant. It was really, it was really insightful to hear a little bit more about your business. And us taking the approach to follow the MPC and follow our ordinance to ensure that we are not putting the township in any compromise is our way of trying to conduct business appropriately. I'm also happy to share with you, if it hasn't already been stated, for the record, that my office has submitted for a grant to offset the cost expenditures associated with the zoning amendment, to actually review these types of things that you've brought forth to the Board so we can make these changes. And so, of course, we will bring to you an invitation to, as we have discussed- And so, of course, we will bring to you an invitation to, as we, we have discussed, we're doing an economic development plan as well as a zoning amendment. Those are future plans for future years, and I hope to hear from you and Amy at those meetings.
Does the, does the board, it's been a while since I've had to appeal a decision to the zoning hearing board, but does the board make a recommendation on whether, on what your feelings are towards the appeal in this case?
No, the board, the board is advised that there is an appeal and has really two choices. One is to sit, sit on the hands, you know, sit on the sidelines, and the other is to actually intervene. But generally, that intervention is after you appear before the zoning hearing board and create a record before the zoning hearing board. There are some exceptions where the board will actually appear, say to staff, we want you, I recall at least one where we had our floodplain ordinance and we, we presented. But in this particular case, especially with a zoning officer determination as to a use, I rarely see boards of supervisors or borough council, for example, engage in that conversation. The zoning officer has to follow the letter of the ordinance and make her determination, and your recourse is to go in front of the board, the zoning hearing board. This board, unless the zoning hearing board were to drastically rewrite the ordinance by the decision they made, probably would not get involved even, even on appeal.
Well, going forward, back to the discussion Centrice and I had, I made this point, I think it's time for Ferguson Township to turn a new page and be more customer friendly, be it a residential customer or a business customer. And we should be looking for, and Ferguson Township should be looking for ways to say yes to applications, not so much to say no. And I'll just leave it at that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And I just one comment, Mr. Chair. I really, I guess, we have a lot of businesses in township existing, and I just want to say thank you to the businesses that are here. Thank you to the businesses that are prospectively coming, and thank you for businesses that are looking here. I think when I joined the board a year and a half ago, I think I spoke the words, "We are open for business," and there have been several businesses, several developments that have come into town that have, that have built the building, maybe not what everybody would, would wish for, but what was allowed. This isn't a today problem. This isn't a last week problem. This isn't a last month problem, and I appreciate you, Ms. Songer, for mentioning that this is kind of many, many years that this board is going to resolve. We're going to figure this out with this manager that's doing a bang-up job, and as evidenced by earlier this year, there was a typo on the West Neighborhood Development zoning. The team got together, they worked it, and they, and they, they found a solution. So, there's a process for all of this. It's not fast. I don't like that it's not fast, because I, I work at the speed of go, but, but it is a process, and, and we're going to work through it. So, just really appreciate everyone's patience with staff getting through all of the things that they have to do for a township of 20,000, which wasn't 20,000 20 years ago, right? Much smaller then. So, it's just, there's a lot of people with a lot of, lot of asks, a lot of tasks. Staff's working through, team's working through, the board is getting things done, and so we'll continue to do so. Thanks, Mr. Chair.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any, any other public comments in the room? Seeing none, that will close out public comment. I do want to go back for announcements and proclamations. May the record reflect, on July 28th, the Board of Supervisors spent an executive session on personnel and legal, so I wanted to get that out. If nobody has any corrections or changes, I will entertain a motion to approve the meeting minutes from July 15th, 2025.
Mrs. Thaddeus, a move?
Do we have a second?
Is Amari second?
Got a motion by Ms. Stevens, second by Mr. Patterson. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. All right. Item 5-1, our diversity, equity, inclusionary activities and acknowledgements. Purple Heart Day is this week on the 7th. International Day of World's Indigenous People is on August 9th. The World Humanitarian Day will be August 19th. Senior Citizens Day, August 21st. Women's Equity Day will be August 26th, and the International Day of People of African Descent is on August 31st. Item 5-2, Authorities, Boards and Commissions Reports. We had the CADA Quarter Two Report as well as the Annual CNET Report. It appears we had late word today that those reports have been moved to the August 19th meeting, so that will bring us then to item 5-3, the COG and Regional Committee Reports with the Executive Committee. I have nothing further to add since we were in general form just recently, so if anyone had any questions on that. Seeing none, Parks and Recreation Governance Committee?
Just that we have been meeting, and I'm going to ask the managers, so the, they're asking for comments back from municipalities. Will that be on our next meeting?
We certainly can have that discussion. I've had a chance to review the recommendations that were presented from the Governance Committee, and I have some comments, and I have asked for the Executive Director and the Director of CRPR to meet for an opportunity to have some discussions with them about the process, and
Okay.
we can certainly have that discussion at some point with the Board of Supervisors. So, if not August 19th, we can perhaps have that discussion at the first meeting of September. I'll have, look at the agendas and figure out what the
Okay, great.
But I have made the recommendation that that date be extended
Oh, great.
to the Executive Director to allow more time to understand the variations and inconsistencies with the municipalities that have home rule charters and how some of the proposed changes present further discussion and concern among managers.
Great, thank you. Thank you for your keen look at that. So, basically, we had come up with a draft of agreement between the Parks Authority and, and COG, and the municipalities, and then also the process for accepting parks into the operations of CRPR. And so, anyway, they were just asking for comments on the drafts, the municipalities to look at it. So, I, I can forward that, make sure it gets forwarded to each of the board members to review, and then between the manager's review and, and staff and anybody else who has comments and, and members of the board, I'd be happy to take it back to the committee, so. But that's where we are. We're slogging through. Any questions?
Just a comment. I know that it's been a bit of a, let's call it a web, that we're trying to kind of put back on the spindle, and kind of just get a nice, you know, clear path and clean kind of interaction between what COG does and the authorities. So, I really appreciate the work that's been going on to get there. I think it's, it's been a little tough.
Yes.
So, it'll be good to see what the final, what the document is and the comments so that we can kind of get some additional thoughts and ideas around it.
Yeah, it's been a process. We've had matrices to discuss whose roles are what, et cetera, which then feed into this document, so it has been a process. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Next report is Facilities.
The Facilities Committee was canceled.
Ah, okay.
We're good to go.
All right. Next up, we have the Biannual Financial Presentation, and I believe, if my memory serves me correctly, I got word that that has been postponed to the next meeting as well. So, that will move us to unfinished business with the informational update, the review and potential amendment to Chapter 21, Part 4, Streetlight Assessments, and I will recognize the Township Manager.
Thank you, Chair. Provided with the agenda is a pretty detailed summary as an informational briefing to the Board of Supervisors. We anticipate to bring forth a recommendation for an update to Chapter 21, Part 4, Streetlight Assessments, following a thorough engagement with the public to understand what their views are, and consider that as we put together a recommendation for the Board of Supervisors, and we aim to bring that forth the first meeting in October. More information will be available on our website, and we will solicit feedback in the form of a survey and a public meeting.
All right. No action is needed for this item tonight, but we will entertain some, actually, if you don't mind, I think we'll just go to public comment, and then if the board has anything that they want to add. So, feel free to step forward there, Mr. Keough.
Bill Keough, Ferguson Township resident. One comment that I would like to make to the board and to staff, and this is the right time of year to do it. When we're talking about streetlights, typically, we're talking about some kind of public ambulatory safety. And in that regard, that's fine. That's a normal goal. But let's look at where we put our trees in that same right-of-way area, and those trees now become fully developed or have a large canopy, for which now the function of the streetlight becomes compromised. And sometimes, it's my sense that we get into such an over regulatory environment. The streetlights have to be so many feet apart. When, when we go to the tree ordinance, the trees have to be so many feet apart and, and everything else. But in this particular case, I think it's going to require a little bit of common sense with regard to the public, the role and the relationship between our tree ordinance and the planting of street trees and our public safety lighting ordinances. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments on this? Seeing none, a board member feedback.
No, just I'm grateful that it's, we're going to open it up for public comment and contribution, so thank you for that.
Yeah, I would agree. I think the process for collecting feedback, getting a kind of a myriad of thoughts and ideas on how to implement this will be great. I think the, the root of this being, but you know, if you're within X number of feet, you pay, and if you're Y number of feet away, you don't pay, I think that that's not right. I think the right words are equitable. So, I really appreciate, hey, it's a shared service, and everybody's going to use it, whether you walk to the park or drive to the park, you're going to use those lights versus, you know, living next to the park. Everybody's going to have some use for it. So, I appreciate it. I would absolutely look forward to some community input and feedback on this to perhaps inform some other items, particularly around kind of the tree and the, and the streetlights, so. Thank you.
See what you did there, the root of the problem. See what you did there.
Oh, yes.
Pun intended.
I was going to say, I like a good pun. So, yeah, thank you, Centrice, and yeah, look forward to what's to come. Item 6-2, the informational update, the review and potential amendment to Chapter 7, Part 2, Fire Hydrant Assessments. And I'll recognize the Township Manager.
Thank you, Chair. Provided with the agenda is a narrative that summarizes the consideration with an informational briefing update on a potential amendment to Chapter 7, Part 2, as the township has undergone an assessment, a very thorough, comprehensive assessment. Same applies here with this. We'd like to solicit feedback from our citizens, get the public input and allow that to inform the recommendation that we bring forth to the Board of Supervisors. A public engagement strategy will be led by the Assistant Township Manager and the Communications Coordinator. More information will be available on our website in the next one to two weeks, and we will solicit feedback in the form of a survey as well as a public meeting, and we look forward to hearing from our residents. And again, that will inform our recommendations to the board that we intend to bring back at the first meeting in October.
All right. Any board discussion on this?
Okay, thank you for the process.
No action was needed for this, so if there is no further discussion, we will move over to new business. And we are moving to item 7-4, a public hearing on a resolution in Township of Ferguson, Center of County, Pennsylvania, approving an application for an intermunicipal transfer of liquor license R-20922, LID 21184, owned by Dante's Restaurant Incorporated, from the premises located at 1688 North Atherton Street, State College, Pennsylvania, formerly Highway Pizza North to 948 Blue Course Drive, State College, Pennsylvania. And I will recognize the Township Manager to open this up.
Thank you, Chair. I'm first going to yield to the solicitor to set the parameters for the meeting procedures for this particular agenda item.
Okay.
Just so everyone's clear, this is being recorded by a stenographer over here, so if you wish to give any kind of public comment, you need to introduce yourself, spell your name, and make sure that she has all the information she needs to put into the record. Speak clearly if you're asked, asked questions. Audibleize your answers, not shakes of heads and things of that nature, because she is recording everything that we say. With that, I'm going to let the manager introduce the item, and then I believe we have a representative of the applicant here to make presentation, and you're welcome to head to the podium if you'd like.
Thank you. So, yes, this evening, the Board of Supervisors will hold duly advertised public hearing to consider a request for the municipal transfer of a restaurant liquor license, and the license is currently held by Dante's Restaurant at 1688 North Atherton Street, and it's being proposed to be transferred to the site of the approved Rutter's Development located there on Blue Course Drive in State College, or excuse me, in Ferguson Township. In accordance with Pennsylvania Act 141 of 2000, Act 212 of 2002, as well as the provision set forth in Ferguson Township Ordinance Number 773, this public hearing has been scheduled to receive public comment prior to the board's consideration of a resolution to approve or disapprove the proposed transfer. Public notice of the hearing was properly advertised in compliance with all applicable legal requirements, and the township has also fulfilled the required site posting. And in an effort to provide additional transparency and to accommodate residents who were unable to attend this evening's hearing in person, the township created an online public notice and comment portal through its website. And this allowed interested residents to review the application materials and submit comments for inclusion in the public record. That webpage is provided, the link is provided in the narrative. Also provided with the chair, I believe, is a copy of the one submission that we received that can be read on the record for consideration by the board. The Township Solicitor and myself have reviewed the application and all of the materials submitted by Rutter's, and they, and we have confirmed that the proposed transfer meets the criteria established by the Pennsylvania Liquor Control Board as it relates to our review and complies with the Township ordinance. And so, this evening, the board is asked to hold the public hearing and give consideration with a recommendation to approve the, or to adopt the resolution. I'm happy to answer any questions, but I also understand that Rutter's, we have Attorney Jack Burns, I believe, Burns, my apologies, here this evening to present some additional information for your consideration prior to taking action on the resolution. Thank you.
Great. Centrice and Betsy, thank you so much for that introduction. Good evening, everyone. I want to thank the board as well, I'm sorry, is this, no.
The mic. I don't know if you want to lean into it or if we need to turn it on.
How about now?
There you are. Thank you. Thank you so much for that.
Apologies. I'll try to stay right here. All right, so again, thank you for that introduction. Good evening, everyone. I want to thank the board, township staff, as well as Ferguson Township residents for attending this evening. My name is Jack Burns. I'm Associate General Counsel for the Rutter's Companies. In addition, I'm also a Penn State alumni, so I just wanted to put on the record that I'm happy to be back here in State College regardless of the municipality. Always happy to be in Happy Valley. But down to business, I'm here today to, again, request approval for the resolution for an intermunicipal transfer of liquor license R-20922 from Patent Township to Ferguson Township, so that they utilize at Rutter's Number 110. It's our coming location at the intersection of Blue Course Drive and West College Avenue. And just one further point of clarification on the exact transfer of this license as well, it is indeed coming from Patent Township, but I'll also say that the exact location is approximately 400 feet beyond the Ferguson Township line, so it's really not traveling too far, you know, about 400 feet to cross over and about two miles. really not traveling too far, you know, about 400 feet to cross over and about two miles as the crow flies to get to the planned Rutter's location. So it is indeed an intermunicipal transfer, just not traveling too far. So again, I just have a few prepared statements here that will hopefully address any concerns the public or the board may have about Rutter's and its operations concerning the sale of alcoholic beverages. Brief outline here, I'll provide a summary of our operations and safety measures surrounding the sale of alcohol. This will include Rutter's licensure in general, Rutter's adherence to the PLCB Responsible Alcohol Management Program, known as the RAMP program, our own internal policies concerning the handling of sale of alcohol, and then a brief word on our safety measures and also our community involvement. After that, I'm happy to address any questions the board, township staff, or members of the community may have concerning Rutter's or our licensed operations. And then if it's okay with the board and township staff, I'd like to reserve a minute or two at the end following questions to make a brief closing statement. So if that sounds good, then I will proceed. Okay, so in case people don't know, Rutter's is a family-owned chain of convenience stores. We currently have 90 locations across three states. Those states are Pennsylvania, West Virginia, and Maryland. We currently operate 69 locations in Pennsylvania that are licensed by the Pennsylvania Liquor Control Board to sell alcohol. We also operate two stores in West Virginia that are also licensed to sell alcohol. And in addition, later this year, we'll be, we'll be opening a third location in West Virginia, and then our newest location in Virginia. Those locations will also be selling alcohol. And I highlight this to just let everyone be aware that whenever we open new stores, the sale of alcohol is something that always Rutter's is contemplating. It is consistently something that our customers request be present, and we strive to have a uniform offering across all of our locations, if at all possible, complying with state regs. So with that in mind, in order to sell alcohol in Pennsylvania, Rutter's is required to have what is called a restaurant liquor license. It may seem a bit strange and a bit of a misnomer, that a convenience grocery store would have a restaurant license, but when the Pennsylvania legislature decided that convenience grocery stores may sell alcohol, they decided not to create a new class of license, but rather have convenience grocery stores comply with what the liquor code sets forth is a restaurant, and then operate under the restaurant license. There's basically two tenants that convenience grocery stores need to comply with chiefly to be deemed a restaurant per the liquor code. The first is to have seating for at least 30 people. That's why you'll often see in all of our licensed locations and a few other convenience grocery stores are licensed, a seating section that includes tables and chairs for at least 30 people. This is required by law, and I will say that even in our much larger stores, which this plans on being one, this will be roughly 13,500 square feet, we rarely see 30 seats filled all at one time. We provide this seating again because it is required by law to do so. And then on a similar note, because this license was created with restaurants in mind, we are, we are duly obligated by law to provide for both on and off premises consumption of alcohol. Even though this license requires us to provide on premises consumption, the vast majority of our customers are buying alcohol for off premises consumption. Our customers are pretty much exactly what you think they would be. They are someone that stops by, buys some gas, gets some food, maybe get a, you know, some beer and some wine to go home. We very rarely see customers that are drinking on premises, but as I'll get into in a little bit, we nonetheless have internal policies in place to police this in addition to the RAMP guidelines set forth by the Pennsylvania Liquor Control Board. And then just a further note on our larger stores that we now have two, we actually now have, because of the size, a designated employee overseeing the seating area where on premises consumption may occur anytime there is someone that is drinking alcohol on premises. So again, just a word on our age-restricted products, which includes alcohol. We don't just sell alcohol as an age-restricted item. We also are a tobacco retailer, and we also sell lottery tickets. That is to say that all of our employees are trained on how to identify those who are restricted patrons, who are not allowed to buy age-restricted items, and that includes alcohol, selling to minors, and visibly intoxicated persons. When it comes to alcohol, we take all necessary steps to prevent illegal sales, again, both to chiefly to minors, as well as to intoxicated persons. Although we will employ employees that are under the age of 18, no employee under the age of 18 is permitted to handle alcohol whatsoever. That includes stocking, handling, selling, and all team members are expected to report noncompliance with this to the manager or the district manager. In addition to our own internal policies, which I'll get into in a little bit, we participate in the Pennsylvania Liquor Control Board's RAMP program. Again, this stands for the Responsible Alcohol Management Program, and licensed establishments can become RAMP certified by having employees and managers complete the four basic pillars of alcohol training and compliance. And again, this is all the four tenants that Rutter's complies with at all of its licensed locations. Very brief overview of these four, the first being owner-manager training. All 69 of our licensed establishments and the State College licensed establishment, if it comes to be, will have a PLCB-approved manager, which means in addition to hiring someone that is 21 years or older that can dedicate full-time and attention to the licensed premises, we will need to submit a separate application with the Liquor Control Board. They will conduct a background check and ensure that they are someone that is capable of overseeing a licensed premises. They will also undergo owner-manager training, which is a little bit of a step above the basic seller-server training. It basically introduces them to formulation of house policies and procedure that applies both to staff and the general public who may be consuming on premises and off. The second pillar would be the seller-server training. This is going to be to any employee 18 or older that is to be selling, stocking, serving alcohol on our premises. They are required to take this training within six months of hire, but we typically have them scheduled within 30 days. It's with a PLCB-approved instructor, and they learn the typical subjects of identifying fake IDs, identifying visibly intoxicated persons, and how to responsibly manage customers. The third tenant would be the new employee orientation. By the RAMP procedures, we are supposed to have a new employee orientation within 30 days of hire. We typically have it within the first day, and this is when they're introduced to all of our internal policies, including those on age-restricted items and alcohol. And then the last component of RAMP certification is the signage, which I'm sure most people are aware of when you go to any restaurant or bar. It's the typical signage on the wall, warning about driving under the influence, how to identify signs of intoxication, blood alcohol charts, et cetera. So for a store to be RAMP certified, at least 50% of the employees need to be RAMP trained. At Rutter's, we strive for 100% employee training. I say strive only because we, as most retailers, experience occasional turnover. So when we lose employees, there's a brief window where between hire and training, but we are generally floating right around 100% compliance. Again, we have RAMP certification at all stores where we sell alcohol, and this training is not a simple one-and-done and forget-it. Both the manager and the employees are required to recertify every two years to refresh themselves on all the procedures that are set forth in RAMP, in addition to our own internal guidelines. I think also a good note for the public as well is that if you ever see an establishment that is able to sell wine or RTDs for off premises consumption, you are only permitted to do so if you have RAMP certification. Rutter's has that certification in all 69 of its currently licensed locations. So again, if we are able to transfer this license to the State College location, we will aim to have RAMP certification likely prior to opening day, so that we will be able to open up with both wine and RTDs to go. And that'll be a good sign to the township that we are indeed RAMP certified. And again, that is the RAMP guidelines, but we also have our own internal guidelines that go a step above what is required by state law. At Rutter's, it's our policy to check the ID of 100% of the customers purchasing alcohol. This is regardless of how old you appear to be, whether you are known to the person who is checking you out, whether you are regular, or what have you. We use ID-scanning technology that is required to be scanned prior to a register ringing up a transaction. So unless you are able to present a valid form of ID, you will not be served any alcohol at a Rutter's establishment. Again, employees must ask for proof of age every single time when there is a product that contains alcohol. One brief note here, too, on safety and community involvement. With regards to safety, all of our establishments, especially our larger ones now, are going to be equipped with adequate surveillance. We actually met with Lieutenant Dan Lewis on Friday to discuss, because I know in the draft resolution, there's some language there about adequate surveillance. We went over our capabilities with him, myself and our Vice President of Operations, Jerry Matthews, made an introduction. There was no objection or questions concerning our capabilities, just a brief word on our redundancy, but if we do lose power, we're just going to shut down completely, so that everyone's upset. But no, it was, it was great meeting with Lieutenant Daniel Lewis. And again, our employees are trained to prepare and to handle situations involving suspicious behavior or any sort of criminal activity, whether it's related to the sale of alcohol or not. But again, I will tell you that from a discussion with our operations team and an internal review of incident documentation, we rarely see any suspicious behavior or criminal activity related to alcohol in our stores. And moreover, when we did a comparative analysis of stores that sell alcohol and those that don't, because we are not licensed in all of our Pennsylvania stores, there's no meaningful difference between suspicious or criminal behavior of locations that sell alcohol and those that do not. Brief word on our community involvement. I believe my colleague, Tim Bieber, was here a few months ago concerning the land development approval. I think what he said deserves parroting a little bit, that Rutter's does not strive just to be a business in the community, we strive to be a part of the community. Rutter's, through its actual, we have a children's charity organization. We support charitable organizations within our geographic footprint. That includes donations to, you know, youth sports giveaways, emergency response team donations, and various other charitable organizations that operate in our footprint. Last year was a great year for us. Rutter's Children's Charity, along with the Rutter's Companies, did $2.1 million in charitable donations to the geographic footprint charities where we operate. And I am saying this not to just sing the praises of our charitable endeavors, but to hammer home the point that Rutter's has worked very hard to establish a positive reputation in the communities in which it operates, and it simply has too much to lose to handle the sale of alcohol or any other restricted item in a manner that would be irresponsible and would do a disservice to the reputation that it has fostered. With that said, again, I would like to just reserve a brief moment after any questions for a closing statement, but that's just about a good overview, I'd say, of our internal operations concerning alcohol, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
I was gonna say, did the board have any questions? I'd say we keep it at questions. This is a public hearing, so we should open up for the public hearing here, at least before the closing statements. That way, we have everything on the record, and, you know, at least any questions could be answered to the best of everyone's ability tonight, or if not, followed up on later, so.
I have one question.
Yeah.
So you had said there's an internal policy about the 100% ID check, and you scan it. You know, what do you do with the data that you collect, or the, that information you collect? It's not sold or?
It is not sold or transferred in any way. It is simply just an internal reference point for checking of the ID. It is not sold, marketed, or in any manner.
Great. Thank you.
Good question. Mr. Patterson?
You mentioned that there's no difference between a store where that doesn't sell alcohol to the one that does from a criminal suspicion behavior. I'm just curious, how do you know? Like, what's, were there metrics that you have that you've looked at?
Correct. Anytime there is any sort of incident, whether it involves the sale of alcohol, suspicious loitering, any sort of obnoxious noise complaints that we get from neighbors, an internal incident documentation is filed from the employee to the manager, which is then routed to our operations team, and that is compiled and used for future reference when we're establishing different stores. And we've, again, we're growing as a company. We're now at 90 locations over three states, soon to be four. We use that information to kind of inform where we like to set up shop, and if there's any sort of meaningful indicators about maybe where we should or should not end up putting up a store.
So there's some sort of average of, you know, let's say, two incidents a month?
I'm not privy to the exact numbers, but I would imagine there is, there is some metrics that would be available, yes.
Okay. Just curious on, if you have it, or not necessarily, like, private, but if there's some sort of metric that you're using to have that comment, I'm curious what that is. But we can take it offline.
Yeah, no, absolutely. And I, before we opened up here, Lieutenant Lewis wasn't here again, and we spoke briefly again, too, and he offered to connect in the future, maybe get lunch, maybe if I come up again, Penn State, or I love coming up here if I can. So next time, we can connect, and perhaps we can as well.
I will give you an excuse, absolutely.
There you go.
Thanks.
I was gonna say, if there's no other questions from the board at this time, I'd say we will, if you don't mind, I'll open up the floor to public comment. That way we can hear if there's any public comments, and then bring you back, you know, if you wish to answer any of those comments and, you know, make your closing statement.
However, the board would like to proceed.
So at this time, I will open the public hearing. So any members of the public that want to do, make some comments on this matter? Oh, right. Yes, thank you. Do I, if I shared the ones that were submitted online, do we need? Just, does it have to be word-for-word, since we do have the stenographer here, same process? Okay. All right. So we did receive a public comment online from Stephen Olmstead, S.T.E.P.H.E.N.O.L.M.S.T.E.A.D. They mentioned, "Blue Course Drive is challenging enough for Township Police to control. Whether sales or consumption potentially adding more alcohol to the problem is fuel for the fire. Road like Blue Course Drive built by anyone, anywhere probably didn't include a comprehensive plan for policing. There are enough public places to stop vehicles and test drivers, and private property isn't the place for this activity. Moreover, is the Township planning for more traffic and public turnarounds for all drivers?" So that was the comment that we had received. This kind of sounds like something that's maybe geared more towards the police. I, I just wanted to say, if, understanding the formality of tonight's proceedings, if there is any questions on this liquor license transfer, or the upcoming Rutter's development, residents are free to call our township staff that can, you know, better answer any questions that they may not understand, or any, any information that they want pertaining to this matter, so.
Yes, sure.
And there is a news article on our front, front page of the website for that, if they wanted to contact the township.
I'll also share, in response to the feedback, or the inquiry that was submitted, there was a traffic impact study done as part of the land development plan, and Rutter's actually provided some additional work in support of site distance. And so we appreciate the extra work that was done by Rutter's, and to acknowledge that, yes, Blue Course, it had, the road has been reviewed with the additional anticipated traffic, and there has been actual additional effort by Rutter's above and beyond what was actually required. So again, I just want to express that that has been reviewed and considered, and as part of the review of Ferguson Township Police Department, Officer, you know, Lieutenant Lewis, this was all considered, and the resolution that's been drafted for the board's consideration has taken into account those items that were presented by our citizen. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. White?
Hi. My name is Trevor White, Ferguson Township resident. And I just want to preface this by saying that this is not going to be said with any malice towards Mr. Burns or Rutter's. I just want to state the undeniable fact that there is going to be a statistical, there is going to be an increase in the statistical probability that I will get killed biking home past this. And on top of this, I would like to say, I drive by, or a drive-by, excuse me, I cycle past Sheets on White Hall every day. People are flawed. It's, it's, it's part of the problem. But people also like to save two seconds and pull through red, red lights, stop signs in this case, and they will be doing this. I know that there are traffic studies that have been done. I can tell you every day, I almost get hit three times by someone trying to save a couple of seconds. So that being said, this isn't directed at the institution, this isn't directed at the representative, this isn't directed at anybody from this township. This is just an undeniable fact. There is going to be an increase in the chance that I and people like me will get hit and killed. Also, there's a residential facility right across the street. That will also increase the probability of people driving. Let's be real, 51 in the 45 driving, trying to avoid people pulling out of there, and potentially hurting the people that live in that residential facility right across the street. If I'm not mistaken on the location, it is at the intersection of Blue Course and College. Yes, yeah. That's it. And I'm sorry to be a Debbie Downer about this, I really am, but I just wanted to bring it to everyone's attention, and thank you.
Yeah, thank, thank you for your feedback, Trevor. And, yeah, as somebody that walks, and I think we have a couple people on this board that do walk, and understanding when a place like this comes about, there are going to be people from neighboring businesses and residential areas walking. So definitely a good item of note on this. One last call for public comments. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and invite the attorney back up for a closing arguments, or closing statements, or arguments.
Thank you. And I appreciate. Thank you. And I appreciate Ferguson Township residents' public comment on this. Again, so just a brief closing statement here. Again, through my presentation, I believe we have established that Rutter's has proven to be a responsible alcohol retailer over the years in all 69 of its currently licensed Pennsylvania establishments. Rutter's has made a significant investment in Ferguson Township and will protect that investment with responsible management and well-trained employees. Under Pennsylvania law, a municipality may only deny a request for an intermunicipal transfer license if substantial objective evidence was presented that the transfer would be detrimental to the health, welfare, peace, and morals of the community. It is today, we heard comments from Stephen Olmstead, as well as Trevor White. Mr. Olmstead, although he was not here to provide any sort of backup, he stated that Blue Course is not capable of allowing adequate alcohol or guidance for alcohol sales and traffic impacts. No sort of reports, data, statistics, or documentation of any kind were provided in conjunction with his comments, unless I'm mistaken. So I will again go ahead and say that only general fear and speculation was provided there. And in addition to Mr. Trevor White's comments on the dangers of biking, he, I believe he said it was an undeniable fact in that he knows there are traffic studies that have been done, but no, again, documentation, statistics, data was provided to back up his statements that there will be an increase of fatalities in connection with this license being transferred to the intersection of West College and Blue Course Drive. So as such, as there was no studies, reports, data, statistics that were submitted that would give the board a reasonable basis to deny this transfer, I respectfully request that the board approve Rutter's request for an intermunicipal transfer of restaurant liquor license R-20922 to the planned Rutter's location on Blue Course Drive in Ferguson Township. Thank you.
Thank you. And the board tonight is asked to adopt the resolution.
Ms. Amari, so moved.
And this is Patty, I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Patterson, second by Ms. Stevens. Any discussion?
Yeah, I think just in response to some of the comments made that were, I think those comments are certainly helpful and more helpful months ago during kind of land development plan and kind of, hey, the building's coming, and we approved the final land development plan, the building's definitely coming. And so today is not about the building coming. It's coming whether we approve this or not. It's really about kind of the transfer of a license that, you know, someone's willing to give and this organization's willing to receive. And so, you know, to that end, there's, at least I didn't hear any kind of rationale for denying such, so I'm good. Thank you.
If not, I will recognize the township manager to call the roll.
Thank you, Chair. All right, this is for a resolution to approve the intermunicipal liquor license transfer for Rutter's. Jeremy Thompson?
Yes.
Amari Patterson?
Yes.
Patty Stevens?
Yes.
Thank you, Chair. The resolution passes with majority.
With majority. All right.
And we can close.
She just went up for her.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. So that has been closed. So next up, we'll have Item 7.1, the consent agenda. Tonight, we have a sale of municipal equipment, 2008 International Truck, the approval of an allocation of funds in the amount of $25,800 for the preliminary fieldwork necessary for an easement per conditional use with conditions for a property located at 1445 West College Avenue. And then we have a TASA pay application, as well as another pay application. If no board members wanted to pull those items, I entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
This is Patty, motion to approve the consent agenda is listed.
And do we have a second?
Ms. Amari, I'll second.
Okay, got a motion by Ms. Stevens, second by Mr. Patterson. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say no. Consent agenda passes. Next, we will have a public hearing on a resolution to township of Ferguson Center County, Pennsylvania to approve the Center County 2025 FEMA Hazard Mitigation Plan HMP update. And I will recognize the township manager.
Thank you, Chair. Provided with the agenda is a more detailed narrative, and I would like to acknowledge that the Center County 2025 Hazard Mitigation Plan, also referred to as the HMP, has been prepared in accordance with FEMA and PIMA guidelines, identifies regional and natural and human-made hazards, and outlines strategies to reduce long-term risk to life, property infrastructure, and essential services. Provided with the agenda is a memo to the Board of Supervisors from myself that provides key highlights and Ferguson Township's specific relevant details included in the HMP. Ferguson Township actively participated in the planning process with the assistance of our Emergency Management Coordinator with Center Region Council of Governments, Jonathan Reisley, who is with us this evening to also answer any questions that the board may have, as he assisted and facilitated closely with the county for the preparation of this item and worked with the Center Region participating municipalities. And so participating in this planning process, myself and others here at Ferguson Township and Jonathan Reisley, it is now required that the Board of Supervisors take action to adopt the updated plan to remain eligible for the federal mitigation funding programs such as FEMA, FEMA's Hazard Mitigation Grant Program, and the Building Resilient Infrastructure in Communities, BRICE, also referred to as BRIC. The plan identifies key hazards relevant to Ferguson Township, including flooding, severe weather, winter storms, drought, radon exposure, wildfires, sinkholes, and utility interruptions. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have and ones that I am unable to answer. I hope that Jonathan Reisley can answer them for you. Provided with the agenda is a recommended motion that the Board of Supervisors adopt the resolution.
Any questions on the HMP?
No questions, just some comments.
Well, it is a public hearing. Was there any members of the public that wanted to comment on this? If not, I will close the public hearing.
All right. I just wanted to say thank you for this document. If I'm completely honest, it was so lengthy, I didn't get through all of it. I was trying to focus particularly on the Ferguson issues and the things that we, as a board, might have any control over. I'm amazed at, I'm sort of a worrier as it is, but when I was reading this, started to get really worried. But then I calmed myself down when I realized how there is a plan for everything. The only thing I did notice, it said it was a living, breathing document, and it had one of our former employees listed as a flood manager or something. It was Jeff Rassler, so we probably need to update that. But anyway, thank you for this document. It's really impressive.
So thank you. The good thing is, I'll point out with this, this plan was compiled by a consultant, which was paid for entirely by a grant. So there was no funds from any municipalities expended towards that. Michael Baker, they were very great to deal with in that regard. This was also opened up to public comment as well, solicited through, I know Ferguson Township, as well as other townships here, shared that out, along with the county as a whole. So public comments were input as well with this. The other thing, going back to the living, breathing piece, we can amend this plan. We typically look at this every five years. There, if we have a significant thing, like if you start going down in there, you'll see some dates of some milestone events, I'll call them. Heat waves, other disasters, you start looking in there. There's earthquakes in Center County, who would have thought? But you can see that on the map, there are the locations and when they were. But, so if we did have an event, we can go back and update this based on our risk assessment that while at this point in time was a snapshot, but it's ongoing. So if things change here in the Center Region or the township, we can go back. And that's one of the things that I talked with the managers already is, every year, I want to have a meeting with them, just, hey, what's going on in your municipality? What do we need to update? What can we update? And if it's a significant change, then we can work with the consultant to get that updated. If it's something minor, we'll just wait till the next time we go and update the whole plan.
Amari, how about you?
My, I got through most of this. It was hard. And I think my overarching, there was a lot of, like, it looks very boilerplate to me. So a lot of words on page, and then at least the kind of action to take is much, is like, you know, small. I think in some areas, I should say. So I don't have any issues with it, other than it, you know, consultant. Put it together, and it's actionable, and so we can, we have something in place to at least move forward. And big thing, FEMA, less funding, what are impacts to local government? Or are there impacts to local governments like ours that have put together a plan to receive funding because we have a plan? I'll pause there, and maybe you can fill in the blanks for where my brain is.
So the short answer to that is that's, a lot of that's to be determined. When this plan was originally, because we worked well on this last year, it was, the final plan was published earlier this year with it going out to all the municipalities in the county to adopt accordingly. What's left to be written, or what's going to be written with the state of FEMA? When, I know I will share that with everyone else, but I cannot sit and stand here and tell you this is what's going to happen.
Okay. And then I guess FEMA services, like the readiness of FEMA to help to the extent something does happen, are they ready? Can they help us? Is FEMA like, are the, and I know there's satellite district offices and groups. Are they prepared or no?
So in order for us to get FEMA response, we're going to have to get state-level response first.
Okay.
And so the way, if we were to have a disaster occur here, we're going to declare it locally, we'll go to the county for additional resources. If the county can't support us, then we go, the county asks the state, hey, we need additional assistance for this here in this location, and then we start bringing in state resources. To talk a little bit more about the state of FEMA and PIMA, again, I haven't seen anything come out as clear guidance, so I don't want to start saying what-ifs. But I've heard the number that in order to declare a state disaster is going to increase significantly. What that number is, I don't want to give the wrong number, but it's going to be a larger increase. So in order for us to get FEMA activity here, it's going to have to be something very significant, potentially. Could we still be eligible for state relief? Yes. But again, what that number is, it's a moving target right now, unfortunately.
Very good. And I would argue this document is one big what-if.
Yes. Because if you go back and look at the other, you know, previous years of this before, you know, COVID-19, the pandemic portion was probably very, it may not have even been in there. Afterwards, we're a little more aware of that. Things that, like, one consistent thing across every municipality in the Center Region was cyber. That threat is more prevalent now than what it was 10 years ago.
Very good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I was gonna say, if I recall even, in a lot of the planning, like, you know, there was a lot of thorough work that went into this, you know, just kind of even identifying what resources we have available in the county and even places for like shelters and, you know, like, what is there that can possibly be considered or is available to us in the event of a disaster? So, you know, definitely appreciate that thoroughness to that.
And the EM Council is working through some other things as well on trying to enhance everything, not necessarily related to this program. Everything can be tied back to the HMP. But in general, we've learned a lot of lessons here over this last year with some incidents that occurred in the region. So how can we bolster our, you know, resilience to some of those things?
I have a question. So for an initial emergency response to some sort of disaster or outbreak or something of that sort, does emergency management have initial funds to set up command response or something of that sort? Do you have that sort of funding already in place?
So I do have a contingency fund right now. You kind of hit a couple very broad topics there, so I'm trying to. But the short answer is yes, I do have a contingency fund. However, that's going to get started. That is not going to potentially fund the entire emergency if you're talking pandemic-level events or seven-day blizzard with excessive amounts of snowfall.
Right, right. I just was trying to make sure that there was initially a fund balance so to get things started.
Yes, I do have a fund balance.
Is it adequate, in your opinion?
So the Emergency Management Council convenes on a quarterly basis, and it's comprised of one elected official, all the municipal managers, the Executive Director of COG, and I believe the Fire Director of Alpha Fire.
And also a representative from Center County 911 and a representative from Penn State University.
Including Jonathan Reisley, who provides, you know, all of the updates to the Emergency Management Council. So as a member of that council, I can share with you that we approve what the contingency fund is for Jonathan Reisley, and we are in discussions at this point in time, and we take the recommendation of Jonathan Reisley. And so those discussions are happening at present time to review what these funds are. So I think Jonathan would love to have more money, probably, at his disposal as needed. So those conversations are happening. And then, of course, that goes further into the COG for further approval through the budget.
Yeah, I was pausing because I was trying to think of how far down the, because we've talked about this before with what's the appropriate amount? What's that look like? What's the cost inflation? There is an existing policy to talk about how that's going to be handled. And then if that is spent, then how does that get replenished amongst the participating agencies in the agreement there? And so it's a very, but again, what's that right dollar amount? So when we initially had those conversations, that was before anyone was talking about, what's FEMA, what's FEMA look like? But if we're going to quadruple these numbers or even higher, what is that right starting amount?
Sure.
And so even on that, just so everyone's aware, I have access to that money, but I have to either request permission from the Emergency Management Council, which that was the last time it was actually used, was to support Meals on Wheels during COVID. So they went back because it didn't necessarily meet the requirements of what's in the agreement to talk about spending that money. But if there is a declared disaster, I can go and start executing funds from that to support whatever I need to. So there is very tight control on what I'm actually spending money on.
Okay. Thank you.
I don't have my booklet with me, but your predecessor gave me a small booklet. If I recall right, wasn't it like 48 hours or something? You know, if necessary, the elected officials would be called and, you know, in the event of a disaster, and, you know, yeah. If you need more.
So I know there was an elected training book that was out. I also provided a copy when I was here last, when we talked about required training. But also, one of the things that Emergency Management Council's working on with some of the groups there is, you know, training for elected. So there's a G402 course out there that talks about what's the elected official's role in emergency, along with, you know, some other trainings for new players on the municipal side that are in place, several public works directors, for example, you know, are very new in their roles. So how do we get them up to speed so everyone's on the same page when something does happen? It's, oh, who are you? What are we doing? And how do we take care of this? So that's being worked along with everyone on the EMC right now.
I took that training. I only did one of them. There were two you sent me.
Yes.
And I only did one. I'm going to do the second one. And how frequently do we need to take that?
So the course changes, it depends on when they update it. There's no requirement to take it every year, every two years.
Okay.
But again, when we work with the 402, you'll see a lot of that same material in that 402 course because it's going to focus on the incident command structure and common terminology for disaster. So when you hear something like area command, what's area command? How's that different from incident command? How's that different from unified command? To answer that, area command's looking at a much larger area. So we couldn't be like looking at the entire Center Region, where you might have an incident commander in Ferguson, another one in Patton, dealing with those incidents there, while unified or area command's looking at the entire big picture. So then we can start sharing resources amongst. So, then we can start sharing resources amongst that versus just, everything's important to me where I'm at, yes, but step back and look at the big picture, what's that priority really? And so, it's trying to best utilize what resources we have locally to us versus, hey, I need the state to send in something, I need something from Altoona, I need something from Williamsport. Well, that's going to be two hours where if we just manage our resources more efficiently, we may not need that external help. And then, incident command's one person and unified command is multiple people. So, you could have a fire department person along with police and public works all talking together to make the decision versus three separate people trying to run the incident themselves.
Yeah, I-
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah, I, I, this, I think the plan, you know, there's, there's an update, we've got it, it exists. But this certainly begs the question, you know, with the uncertainty around FEMA, PMA, just begs the question, what are we doing for Ferguson from a shared services perspective? If we think about government as a shared service, what are we doing from a shared service perspective to make sure that our residents? What are the risks for Ferguson Council specifically? And what are we doing or we have available for our residents specifically? And if the answer's nothing, okay, great, you know, but I, I do think we should start squirreling away some dollars for, for, for these, for emergency management specifically for, and recognizing, you know, sharing resources across the region. So, that's probably a topic for a later time, which will certainly, would love to have your assistance in kind of talking, you know, municipality-wide while also thinking more broadly. That said, Mr. Chair, I'm happy to make the motion if you'll entertain it.
Yes, yes, please. Our time expired.
I move to adopt Resolution 2025-20.
Mrs. Patty, I'll second.
Got a motion by Mr. Patterson and seconded by Ms. Stevens. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I thank, thank you, Mr. Riesley for your participation tonight. No further discussion. I will ask the township manager to call the roll.
Thank you, Chair. This is a resolution, a roll call for a resolution. Jeremy Thompson?
Yes.
Omari Patterson?
Yes.
Patty Stevens?
Yes.
Thank you. Chair, the resolution passes with majority vote.
Thank you. Item 73, we have a public hearing on the resolution, resolution of the Township of Ferguson, Center County, Pennsylvania, adopting the capital improvement, CIP, budget for the years 2026 through 2030. And I will recognize township manager.
Thank you, Chair. Provided with the agenda is a detailed narrative summarizing the presentation of the proposed 2026 to 2030 capital improvement plan, as well as the dates where the Board of Supervisors held special meetings with the opportunity for public input on both occasions as the board reviewed each of the proposed items. The comments that were received by staff from the Board of Supervisors to make changes to the proposed budget were incorporated and then presented at the July 15th Board of Supervisors meeting, presented as what we now refer to as the draft 2026 to 2030 capital improvement plan has been, was approved on July 15th, and the board provided authorization to legally advertise for this public hearing that is being held this evening. The board is asked to approve, or excuse me, to adopt the resolution to formally accept the 2026 to 2030 capital improvement plan. Provided with the agenda is a recommended motion for the board to adopt the resolution.
All right. This is a public hearing, so anyone in the room wanted to address the board on the CIP? Mr. Keough.
Bill Keough, Ferguson Township. I think I said this once before while we were going through the CIP, that the CIP that we've seen this year is the most comprehensive I have ever seen regarding current and future plans to manage our Ferguson Township capital resources. It is an excellent document. And I also said, I think around that time, that it is not a consumer-friendly document. And we did talk about the fact that maybe in the future, we need to, to look at developing a, an executive summary that, that hits the highlights for the average citizen. But, in addition to that, I want to offer some caution in passing this resolution. I'm not saying don't pass it, but I'm offering some public caution, given the fact that you have not been provided any estimate of figures projected township income related to the overall township budget. At least I'm not finding it. And, and, and if it's there, it's not there in a way that is obvious. It is a 200-page document. So, so I certainly will bow to the fact that it can be found there. But it doesn't appear that we have the kind of income data coupled with the document to show our overall income for the whole operating budget. In addition, we don't seem to have a clear path with regard to where the income opportunities are going to come from with regard to the fund categories that we're going to use. We've identified the fund categories that we're going to use for the capital improvement program projects, but we haven't really talked about where the dollars are going to come from and what those dollars represent in terms of the overall budget for the township. It appears to me that you're being asked to approve this resolution with what appears to be no income estimates in terms of the reality of the end budget, which you're going to next approve in the coming months. I recognize that approval of this resolution does not obligate or authorize any particular funding. But it would be nice if, as we approve a significant portion of our overall budget for Ferguson Township, that the CIP document clearly reference projected income for the township for the, for the coming year, where this, this particular item is going to be a part of the, the budget. And like I said, if it's there, I, I certainly apologize, but it didn't appear to be obvious to me. But I am not speaking in terms of not passing this resolution tonight. I'm just adding my comments as something to be considered for the future. Thank you.
If I may, will you entertain a question?
Oh, certainly.
Well, from, from all of your experience, because you've been, you've been around for a while, has what you're suggesting ever been done before?
I believe it, I believe it was done in a rough, with rough numbers. I remember when I was a supervisor, that we, we would have some collection of, of what our income for the, our proposed income for the coming year was going to be overall, and then what percentage of that was going to be allocated to a capital improvement program. I recall that kind of reference, okay? And, and I guess that's part of what I'm trying to say tonight, that, that I think we need one more piece to this picture for you all. And that is, as you're going through the capital improvement process, that you have some frame of reference to the overall budget, because ultimately, you're going to be faced in the coming months with the question, do we raise taxes? Don't we raise taxes? Do we have enough money? Don't we have enough money? And so on. And, and, and those kinds of discussions are going to relate back to both the capital improvement program as well as the regular operating budget. But that, that's what I recall, Omari.
Thank you.
Yep.
That's a very good question.
Chair, I would like to just provide some, some comments to the Board of Supervisors for the record. So, while I can appreciate that we have not yet posted on our website a presentation of a, kind of what a breakdown of a brochure that would highlight just a very brief summarized presentation of our CIP. We have been working on that, and we hope to have something posted on our webpage in the near future, as we don't disagree that there is a benefit to having a very quick review of the key highlights of our capital improvement program with a link to go and view the more comprehensive version. I also would like to just take a minute and acknowledge, you know, Ferguson Township does not include, I think Mr. Keough is correct, I don't think, excuse me, I know Mr. Keough is correct, that Ferguson Township does not include estimated revenues in its capital improvement program plan, because the CIP is intended to serve as a long-range planning tool rather than a financial appropriation document. Ferguson Township does not include estimated revenues in its CIP because, to be consistent with our charter, Chapter 1, Section 1902 of the Township Code, and best practices in municipal budgeting as recommended by the auditor and others that we've consulted with, it's recognized that its, its purpose is to provide a framework for informed decision-making and strategic investment in our infrastructure and facilities. So, this long-term planning document is to inform the Board of Supervisors of our assets and the expenditures that have been, you know, identified with estimates by staff, what we need to invest in. And so, it's your opportunity to review that as a, as a responsibility of the township to maintain our investments accordingly. And also, provided with that comprehensive document is an outline per our policies that acknowledges what qualifies as an expenditure. So, items over $2,500, and it also identifies what's considered to be more operational versus an expenditure, a capital expenditure program item. And so, best practices in our municipal budgeting generally emphasize that while the CIP may include general references to potential funding sources, maybe grants or others, it does not and should not detail or speculate revenue projections. In fact, doing so can often undermine the accuracy and flexibility of the plan. And so, we have found that in past conversations, we would get into a lot of false narratives by presenting estimated projections of what our revenues were. So, I just wanted to bring some clarification. Mr. Keough is correct, it is not included in our comprehensive capital improvement program plan, and that's a result, or an effort to be consistent with our charter as well as aligned with municipal best practices.
The public hearing is still open, so I will be entertaining any further public comment. If you're okay yielding to, okay. At this time, we will yield any further public comment. Anyone else in the room who wanted to address the board on the capital improvement plan? Seeing none, I would close the public hearing and recognize Mr. Patterson, if you had any follow-up on the manager's remarks.
Happy to make a motion. We can discuss or we can talk now. Defer to you, sir.
I, I can take a motion since our time has also expired on this item.
All right. I move to adopt resolution, adopt the resolution.
Mrs. Patty, I'll second.
Got a motion by Mr. Patterson, seconded by Ms. Stevens. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I, I, I like to, just my thinking of all I've heard here, and, and this is just me personally, having an understanding of the needs. So, you know, kind of, the world is oyster, and you know, type of, you know, you're, if you were king for a day, that type of thing, like, what would you want? What would you, what are the needs? What are the must-haves, should-haves, nice-to-haves? Just put it all out there, right? To be able to service the community. What are the shared services that we do for our constituents every day? And what do you need to do that? And so, that's what I see from this is, we got that, we pared it down, we kind of prioritized, gave it over a five-year period. And so, what we're doing here is to say, all right, we're going to take the work that we did two months ago and let staff take that direction that's in there for 2026 and then craft a budget that then ties into and mirrors the sources of funds projected with a full, you know, nine months of revenue collection and, and work to then identify the full budget. And so, I, I'm okay with that process. This is just me personally, and I understand the code kind of aligns with that as well. Because I do want to know what are the needs without, and I think Madam Manager hit on it, without kind of folks looking at the budget, looking at dollars to, to guide their needs. It's let the needs of our residents guide the needs, and then we'll see what the funds are to do that. So, I think my only question now, and I probably shouldn't have made the motion, but I'll ask the question anyway. The word budget is in this resolution. And so, do we need that word there, Madam Manager? Do we need the word budget in this resolution?
I'd have to pull it up to see, is it referenced as a capital improvement budget? Or is it-
It is. Capital improvement program budget is the word on the resolution, it's the word at the end, but it actually says, hey, we made a capital improvement plan, program plan.
It's been an effort that we've been making more intentionally over the last couple of years. I think oftentimes that your, your question is well-received and I think well-taken. I think oftentimes the misuse of the word, of the, of the title of the document can lead folks to believe a budget should have revenues and expenditures. So, I absolutely can understand that confusion. We can amend, of course, this evening if the board so chooses to adopt the resolution, we can acknowledge that staff will replace any reference with budget in the title of the CIP and replace it with consistent verbiage as what's in the code, which would be a capital improvement program plan.
Copy. So, then if no one's opposed, what could a board if they don't change something? So, I move, it's a motion on the motion, to amend the resolution to remove the word budget and make sure it says capital improvement program plan.
This is Patty, I'll second.
Okay, so we have a budget, a budget amendment. We got an amendment to the motion made by Mr. Patterson, seconded by Ms. Stevens. All those in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Okay, any opposed, say no? Okay. The motion's amended.
So, now we have, so now the full motion is now to approve the-
The plan.
The resolution, amend, adopt the resolution with the words capital improvement program plan throughout the resolution.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? If not, I'll recognize the township manager to call the roll.
Thank you, Chair. This is a roll call vote to adopt the resolution with the amendment. Jeremy Thompson?
Yes.
Omari Patterson?
Yes.
Patty Stevens?
Yes.
Thank you. Chair, the motion passes with majority vote.
All right. Next, item 75, a public hearing on a resolution for Leclair Sanitary Sewer Planning Module Component 2 for an on-lot sewer expansion located at 3392 Shingle Town Road in the RA Rural Agricultural Zoning District. And I will recognize the Director of Planning and Zoning.
Thank you, Chair. The property located at 3392 Shingle Town Road is proposing the installation of an additional on-lot sanitary sewer system. This will support a future building addition, it's 1,000 square feet, cider addition, again in the RA District. Included with the permit requirements is the requirement to complete the sewage facilities planning module as required by the Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection. Doing so requires a resolution for a plan revision for a new land development to be approved by the Board of Supervisors. The resolutions are approved after the public hearing. You have in your packet provided the, our version of the resolution, and then also the one that comes directly from the Department, the Environmental Department, Protection Department. And the recommendation is that the Board of Supervisors move to approve the resolutions.
All right. This is a public hearing. Any- Any members of the public wanting to address the Board of Supervisors? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. And did we have any questions for the Planning and Zoning Director?
I will.
Okay.
I'll bite.
Well, don't literally.
I might. Ms. Stevens, I am very curious, could you give an estimate how much time went into this sewer expansion kind of resolution and kind of all the back and forth with appropriate parties?
More than future because there's also, we haven't had one that I know of since 2021, so it was sort of a backtrack on what the actual process is to understand that this is a Component 2, which is the on-lot, but that requires us to fill out, it's all about forms, Form 4A, which basically says we comply with the comprehensive plan in our items, Form 4B, it's filled out by the Center Region for their portion of it, and because there are marginal soils, we also had to fill out Q. But, so there's a little bit of a learning curve in understanding that, putting together the resolutions. But in the future, from what I understand, also the Component 2 is the most common that we will see, and so now we have a template. So actual time, I don't know. Probably in total, I mean, more than, probably, you're wanting me to say hours, and we're close to that, but I don't know that it would be that in the future.
That's okay.
We're totally the engineer.
I'm trying to, like, I want the public to know a couple of things. Number one, you're, I don't know, I don't remember now, some number of months on the job.
Yes.
We're counting in months.
Eight and a half.
What's that?
Less than a year.
Less than a year.
We're still counting in months, your time on the job as our planning director. And you get lots and lots of requests for things. This is one of them. There's some zoning amendments perhaps, there's some approvals, there's some zoning, there's some things, and as, there's a good bit. And there's a learning curve when you're working in months and not years. I just want, I want to publicly acknowledge the hard, the good work
Thank you.
that you're doing, first of all, and thank you for it. And I think back to my comments earlier today, that this township is open for business, and this shows it. We've got the cidery, which I remember going back there years ago when it was just one tent, and then it was, you know, a building, and then it's, you know, we're expanding the building, and they've got a lot, and they're doing, you know, they're adding to it, and I think that's phenomenal. So, you know, good on you, good on staff, thank them all for their hard work, and, you know, kind of, you know, let's keep, keep, keep the ball rolling.
Thank you.
That's all I got. Thanks for your.
Yes, thank you. Any other board discussion?
I think we need a motion. Or do we have a motion?
Yeah, we're.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution.
Is Omari, I'll second.
Yeah, I did, did open up the public hearing, so we have a motion made by Ms. Stevens, second by Mr. Patterson. Any further board discussion on this? If not, I will recognize the Township Manager to call the roll.
Thank you, Chair. This is a roll call vote to adopt the resolution. Jeremy Thompson?
Yes.
Omari Patterson?
Yes.
Patty Stevens?
Yes.
Thank you, Chair. The motion passes with majority vote.
All right. Right on time with that one. Item 76, a discussion on a repeal and replacement of Chapter 25 Trees, Section 110, Violations and Penalties, and I'll recognize Township Manager.
Thank you, Chair. Provided with the agenda is a detailed narrative, and I'm happy to answer questions, and I can read the narrative for the record if you'd like. In short, I want to bring to the board's attention that you might recall on August 18th, or you wouldn't recall, actually, this is a summary of activity that's happened over the last 10 or so years. On August 18th, 2014, the Board of Supervisors adopted Ordinance 911, establishing Chapter 25 Trees and concurrently amending Chapter 21 Streets and Sidewalks, Chapter 22 Subdivision and Land Development, and Chapter 27 Zoning of the Township Code ordinances, which is provided as Exhibit 1. And then subsequently, on October 17th, 2016, the board adopted Ordinance 1023 to amend Chapter 25, specifically Section 5, which is noted as hazardous and nuisance trees on public and private property, and Section 10, Violations and Penalties, Exhibit 2. And that same evening, the board adopted Resolution 2016-32 to support implementation and enforcement of oak wilt prevention measures, Exhibit 3. Most recently, on February 18th, 2025, the board adopted Ordinance 2025-1113, I'll have to get clarification on that number, to update Section 25110, Violations and Penalties of the Township Code, which should also be presented as Exhibit 4. However, I do want to bring to the board's attention that the revised language was not clearly delineated in terms that was to be added versus removed, and so therefore currently resulting in a need for corrective legislative action by the Board of Supervisors. And as such, staff recommends the board give consideration to repeal the current version of this ordinance in its entirety and replace it with language provided in the attached Exhibit 4. And upon review of the updated ordinance, staff also identified a significant policy gap that the board may also want to give consideration for some changes or amendments. The current enforcement language applies only to properties located within the regional growth boundary and residential development in R1 and RR zoning districts are not held to the same application of the policy. So as a result, residents outside of these geographic areas who prune oak trees between August 1st and October 31st without securing a tree permit from the Township Arboretum for emergency conditions would not be subject to the same enforcement or penalties compared to their, compared to township residents living inside the regional growth boundary. And so the board, while making the amendment for the corrective legislative action, may also want to give consideration to proposed amendment that would address the inconsistency and support equitable enforcement township-wide. Happy to answer any questions the Board of Supervisors, happy to answer any questions the board may have. I'll also acknowledge the next two agenda items are related to the review of this ordinance.
All right, any questions?
Yes.
Yeah, go ahead.
That was a lot, and I get it, because I went and read all this stuff, but I think if we were to kind of make three bullet points on exactly what the board is being asked to do, what would those three bullet points be?
That we repeal and replace the ordinance, particularly Section violations and penalties. We repeal it entirely and replace it with a, with the existing ordinance from the 2016 amendment with the two provisions that the Township Urban Forester presented to the Board of Supervisors in February, so we can have a true reflection of the board's intention to update the penalties and violations section. The second bullet point would be merely that during this review, we also acknowledged that there was an inequitable application of the policy compared to residents living inside the regional growth boundary compared to those outside.
Very good. I'll paraphrase, repeal and replace, what, bottom line is, what we approved several months ago in the E-code, it only had those two sections, one section with two A and B or something like that, right?
Correct.
Okay, and so now we want to make sure we get the other sections that were kind of on page two back in there. So we're going to repeal what we did before, but we're replacing it with the pieces that we actually meant to do.
To have a complete ordinance.
To have a complete ordinance.
Correct.
Very good, thank you.
All right, this is just a, this is just a comment about, I realize we're focusing on our ordinance, but do we, do, does Patent Township, for instance, have similar ordinance? I mean, just in terms of taking care of oak, I'm talking about the subject of oak wilt and the area that it
Yes.
encompasses. Just because it's in Patent Township doesn't mean it's not going to bleed over to us, so are we doing this in a vacuum or do other?
I can speak to Patent Township because I wanted to review how they enforce the penalties and violations section, particularly as we talk about the discussion and review of oak wilt policy and fiscal implications. I did a quick review of their ordinance. So yes, we, we have an oak wilt policy and ordinance with the violations and penalty section that is similar to Patent Township's, which I would recommend, well, if the board were to ask for a recommendation, I would acknowledge that I'm, I'm not opposed to using Patent Township's violations and penalties section as a model.
Okay, great, thank you.
Yes, Mr. Kio, please step forward.
Bill Kio, Ferguson Township. I understand, I realize this discussion is aimed at violations and penalties and that section of the ordinances. I understand that, but I do have a couple of clarification questions. And Township Manager Martin did reference this, but it didn't read it that way on the agenda document. Outside, within the regional growth boundary, fine, I understand that, all zones. However, there's also then a reference to R1 zones and RR zones, are they outside the regional growth boundary, or is this whole thing only within the regional growth boundary?
The ordinance is currently written in such a, well, to have the complete ordinance in its entirety as it was intended to be, the application of enforcement, meaning the violations and penalties, would only be applicable to those living inside the regional growth boundary, and therefore those living outside and specific to R1 and RR would not be held to the same violations and penalties as those inside the regional growth boundary. So for example, if I live in Overlook Heights in Ward 3, and I am caught by the Township Urban Forester pruning my oak tree on June 1st, I am subject to a violation and a penalty fine. But if I live, let's say, outside the regional growth boundary, and let's say I live in RR or R1, and I'm pruning my oak tree on June 1st, and it's observed by the Township Urban Forester, there is no penalty or violation that would be issued by the Township Urban Forester.
Okay, thanks for that. That's kind of what I heard you say, but, but that's not kind of the way I read it when I'm reading the, the agenda. And so that's what I, I wanted to get some clarification on. I know when, when this whole section of the larger ordinance was developed, there was some concern about outside the regional growth boundary and specifically the RR zoning district. A very significant amount of land is zoned RR outside of the regional growth boundary. And in addition to that, a significant part of that land is forested. And, and I wanted to make sure that I was, I was understanding that the penalties and violations section excluded the RR areas of the township. So you've clarified that? Thank you.
May, may I ask a question?
Yes, Mr. Patterson.
I like this.
I appreciate, I want to, I want to tap into your knowledge and experience, right? And so why should there not be a violation for someone that lives outside of the regional growth boundary for pruning their oak wilted tree and spreading that oak wilt? Help me understand.
I appreciate the question. I don't want to speak for everybody in the RR district, but what I will say to you is, we do forestry and forest management in the RR district, including the harvesting of forest trees. And, and there is state law regarding that activity. And I'm not an expert in that, but I do know that, that we, we look at both the Ag District and the RR District as significantly forested, even though we have a lot of corn at the moment out here in the Ag District that you see. So I think the only answer I have at the moment is that we, we practice in the, outside the regional growth boundary, ag, tree management, and trees are one of our resources, and we do lumbering, harvesting of those trees. And we didn't want to have that activity be imposed on an individual oak tree that happens to be in the area that we're harvesting.
Thank you. I mean, I look forward to hearing from more people that can speak to why we shouldn't, we should only spread oak wilt out there versus in here, so I
And, and I can't answer the oak wilt reference to your question.
I'm with you. That's the resolution, though, right? That's this ordinance.
Right.
And so I do want to hear more about, from, from, maybe you can bring in some experts that
Well, I mean, I think even if we talk to our urban forester
Yeah.
in terms of what can be, what, what can reasonably be enforced?
Well, I would just say that in Patent Township, it's not zoning district-specific. Applied across the township. That the, the state law that Mr. Kio is referencing is related to forestry in all zoning districts. It's not restricted to Ag and R1. It would be in commercial, which is why you had your issue over here with the TTD and people wanting to cut their trees, or if you're in Patent Township, we have wooded hills which got cut down ahead of its development because I can cut my trees wherever I want. The difference with oak wilt, and I think your forester will say this, is that because of the implications of pruning those trees incorrectly and at the wrong time of the year causes the spread of oak wilt, that you have a public health, safety, welfare argument to say, I can restrict what you're doing with these trees in this time period. And I, it's interesting you asked about Patent Township. I sat through numerous township meetings because the bulk of the original oak wilt problem was in Park Forest, much of it was in Patent Township, but it crossed into Ferguson. And so I heard foresters speaking about, you know, exactly what Bill is saying, well, we cut trees, well, why can't, you know, people were like, why can't I cut my trees when I want to cut my trees? And it was pretty compelling evidence from the foresters about how this particular disease gets, gets transmitted. And there are ways to prune them and protect them, as opposed to the Dutch Elm disease that they found on Penn State's campus, which you pretty much, once you find a diseased tree, you got to take it. Because you're done, yes, thank you.
Right, and so there are ways that we would suggest if, if there is a tree that needs addressed, right? We wouldn't prune an oak tree from April 1st to October 1st, we would remove the oak tree and treat the area if it was confirmed with oak wilt. So I just, I echo everything the solicitor said, and I can appreciate Mr. Kio's concerns. However, I would, I would acknowledge that there is an opportunity to review with consideration to an equitable application of the policy as the policy exists for a public safety concern and public welfare. The spread of oak wilt is a serious condition to which we hear at our state and federal level, and so the township appropriately and responsibly took action to mitigate this issue in 2014. And we can discuss how this application of this particular section of the policy is not consistent with the fiscal implications of the inconsistencies as it relates to an amendment to 2016 Resolution 2016-32.
I think, and in addition, Mr. Patterson, with the tree lots that you find in the RR district, we typically district, we typically are not involved in pruning anything. We're harvesting, but we're, we, we, we aren't worried about a limb hanging over here except, except when that limb interacts with our equipment next to our fields. And in that particular case, we do do pruning, primarily in relation to wind damage and/or trees that, that start to impact on the larger equipment that we're using today that we didn't use 30 years ago.
I am having so many flashbacks of trying to have, of crouching my head behind the steering wheel of the tractor and basically dodging every tree branch that came wrapping around the muffler of that tractor right at your face. Us, us farmers do have a little bit of a risk with tree limbs when going through our fields.
And our township urban forester really engages with a great deal of public education. We do prioritize public education. We put a lot of information through to our newsletter to help our residents, you know, identify opportunities to, to, to mitigate and manage those types of issues as you just described them, in, in a way that can reduce or mitigate the risk of spreading oak wilt.
Right, and, and I was also thinking, there is a lot of like even clusters of single-family homes within a small confined area in many parts of the rural parts where it, it, it would be beneficial for those homeowners, you know, for this policy to be applied across the board because it's not a matter of you can just chop down a tree. You sometimes, you know, depending on what you got going on, you need to get a professional and it can become very expensive. So if we can try to keep the trees healthy, that may mitigate the need for having to call those professionals and having all that heavy equipment and cost that goes with it.
Yeah, that makes sense. And so this evening, we're happy to hear any comments from the board as we prepare an amendment for the Board of Supervisors' consideration at a future public hearing as we amend the ordinance.
Yeah, I was.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Mr. Patterson.
So we've, we've, I think we've co-mingled six and seven, so if we want to resolve number six, I'm, I'm happy to make a motion and then we'll go to number seven, if that's okay.
Okay, yeah.
Okay.
What are you proposing for number six?
I move to repeal the February 18th adopted ordinance 2025-1113 and to replace with ordinance.
With a future ordinance amendment that would put it in its entire, a complete ordinance to restore it to its original state from 2016 with the provisions noted in the February 18th, 2025.
Hold on. Yeah, I move to repeal ordinance 2025-1113 and to replace with, is, is it still 1113?
With a future ordinance amendment.
Okay, so we don't have a number yet?
We don't have a number yet.
Got it, thank you, all right. Let me say this again. I move to repeal ordinance 2025-1113 and replace with a future ordinance number which takes the language from 1113 and puts it into the language from the, you know, February 17th, the day before.
Thank you.
I have a procedural inquiry on this one because I was thinking, one, isn't the action the board is to make to authorize for public advertisement of a public hearing? That's at least what I saw went out to the Center Daily Times on August 3rd.
I'm sorry, what's your question?
Isn't the action the board's to take is to authorize legal advertisement of a public hearing on this?
Yes, we, so yes, that is the action you can take with that verbiage and/or acknowledging that you want the ordinance amendment here as stated this evening. So you could also add in what you identified in our legal advertisement, which is to authorize legal advertisement. Technically, the, technically, the board doesn't have to give authorization to advertise the legal announcement. It's a, it's a, there's not a procedural error if you don't authorize the legal advertisement. We generally put it in that step as a way to say, this is a recommendation from staff and with your review and approval of what's being presented, we ask you to give authorization for the legal advertisement, not because it's a requirement of the code or the charter or at the state public notice requirements, but more of a acknowledgement that the board is, the board, there's consensus by the board that you're in agreement to the recommended change. It's, it's, it's the manager's way of saying, okay, we will proceed in this fashion because we have your blessing, but it's, it's not a procedural requirement. Does that make sense?
Hence why it's a future ordinance.
Okay, yeah, okay.
So both of the, so the verbiage that you both have acknowledged, what you acknowledged as the advertisement and what you acknowledged to be very clear about what the action, what the expected action is for the next meeting, they're both correct.
Okay. Yeah, I, I just, not that I would ever be led astray, but I was just worried we would skip a step, but yeah, I, I, I get it.
I appreciate the opportunity to give clarification too.
We will proceed as we normally do.
Thank you.
Mrs. Patterson, I will second Marri's motion.
Okay, got a motion by Mr. Patterson, second by Ms. Stevens, so all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, say no.
Thank you.
And next, we have a discussion and review of oak wilt policy and fiscal implications, and I will recognize the township manager, if there was anything you wanted to add. I guess we kind of blurred the two there.
Thank you, thank you Chair. So I'll, I'll just acknowledge the narrative in, in parts. So the Resolution 2016-32 adopted by the Board of Supervisors in October of 2016 established a township-led program for the identification, education, and mitigation of oak wilt, which I think we've covered at this point, is a serious tree disease affecting private and public landscapes. And so the policy authorizes staff to initiate abatement measures, including tree removal, trenching, and fungicide injections and public outreach with pre-authorized expenditures of up to $10,000 by purchase order for immediate response. I'll acknowledge that that in itself is inconsistent with our municipal code as stated in other places, as well as our HRC, but it is indicated in this resolution, so there's some conflicting policies with this language particularly. Additional expenditures may also be authorized by the board through budget amendments or use of reserves as outlined in Section 2 of the resolution. And so while the resolution reflects the township's proactive commitment to the environmental stewardship, the policy framework also creates a potential financial burden on the township for the treatment and removal of diseased trees located on private property, particularly in cases where residents provide written authorization for township access and treatment. And this approach through voluntary, though voluntary for residents, results in the township assuming a significant upfront cost that may not be fully reimbursed. And so by contrast, Chapter 25 of the Code of Ordinance, specifically Section 25-105-3, outlines a clear enforcement pathway in cases of nuance, nuance or diseased trees, including oak wilt. And so under this provision, the township, it acknowledges that the township Public Works Director position may inspect, order, enforce treatment or removal of diseased trees on private property. And so the, the ordinance indicates that the, if the property owner fails to comply within 30 days of receiving certified notice, the township may carry out the work and recover the cost through a municipal lien. But the Resolution 26-32 does not state that. In fact, it, it states that the township will absorb the cost and staff has the authority to expend up to $10,000 without ever bringing it to the board. And I understand this board has received a great deal of feedback from the public and has also expressed concerns where policies may exist where the township expenditures have increased over time. And knowing that as budget season is, is near, we will be discussing our revenue issues and how we address them. And I would like to bring to the board's attention, as previously stated in public comment, that we have a great deal of private property in certain sections of the township where, of course, if there is a spread of oak wilt, while, while our other sections of policy indicate that we won't enforce in an equitable manner the violations and penalties, it does indicate here in this section of the, of the resolution that the township will assume 100% of the financial cost, which again conflicts with Chapter 25, Section 25-105. So presented to the board is just again, as we went through this policy review for corrective legislative action, these observations were noted and wanted to bring to the board's attention for an opportunity to consider what, if any amendments you wanted to bring. You'll notice again that it was advertised for action, but the way that the, the narrative's been written is more about bringing to your attention for you as a board to decide how you would like to proceed. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Are you sure?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so we're talking about oak wilt. Once again, it's a damaging disease for the trees. In Item 6, we talked about, you know, not clawing into oak wilt or pruning oak wilted trees in June to prevent the spread. And just the, in this chapter, we have some things that align to both public and private whereby it's like, hey, we want to mitigate, prevent the spread. And, and there's this, I'd call it a mandate to mitigate. And going back to number six, if you go and prune or claw into it, within the regional growth boundary, you're subject to a violation and a penalty and a fine, but nowhere else. And also, if you're anywhere in the township, whether in the regional growth boundary or outside the regional growth boundary, you can get your oak wilt mitigated at the expense of every township resident for your private property. And so that, in summary, gives me a, gives me pause because I think there are certain shared services that government should be on the hook for, fire, police. Let's just leave those two for right now. So is this a shared service, this oak wilt mitigation, is this a shared service that we want all residents to pay for? And I think that that's the question there, where I think we, I'd love to hear some feedback. I'd love to hear feedback that, should we mitigate oak wilt across the entire township for no fee? And should we penalize only the people within a certain area for doing any pruning or clawing into the tree to spread, you know, for a spread of oak wilt? I think most people would, most, I don't know, I think many would say, would agree with me and say, that doesn't sound, doesn't sound like a overarching kind of clean, shared service and policy around a shared service. And in my opinion, everything, it should be clean for everything across the board. We want to mitigate oak wilt, we'll mitigate oak wilt, oak wilt, period. We want to prevent the spread, we want to prevent the spread. And if anybody decides to claw into a tree that spreads oak wilt, then they should all be subject to a fine of some sort or a penalty or violation be cited across the board. And also, if someone needs some help, where, hey, it's 10 grand to mitigate the oak wilt on a 10-acre property, well, I, I can understand that people don't have $10,000 sitting around and so maybe it is appropriate for the township to pony up for all, everybody in the township to put up a dollar temporarily for someone to, for, to receive a little bit of help and then that person to pay it back later. I think that's appropriate. I think that's a good use of shared services, shared dollars, a good community use to help our fellow resident. So I think for me, that, that would be kind of a framework is that everything across the board has kind of the same opportunity for help, the same opportunity to not violate, the same opportunity to have mitigation and, what are the other ones? Education, so everybody should have the same. And then if somebody needs a little help, we should help them and, and then they, you know, at some point down the road, they pay that back. So I think that that's a good framework, in my opinion. I'll pause there.
Got anything, Patty?
No, I, I agree with you, except I think what we're getting at here with this last one is that we are trying to reduce the, the township actually from having to pay to remove like a distressed tree on someone's property, that ultimately the financial burden would go to that person and not the township, is that right?
That is correct. A case in point would be in 2022, I believe, we had a property outside of the regional growth boundary with approximately 22 trees. It was about $4,000 to $5,000, and, and these are rough estimates that I'm pulling from memory, about $4,000 to $5,000 to remove the infected trees and probably another $10,000 to $12,000 for the injections, the treatment of the oak wilt that was confirmed at the site where the 22 trees existed. And so, yes, that is an example to the point that you're making that confirms what's been presented to the board.
Okay, so we're just looking to clean up that, that ordinance so that we can, yeah.
Yes, yes, and I would, you know, I think this is the reference I made earlier in, in review of how Patent Township did it. It's my understanding, and again, this was a quick review, so I could probably get more of a thorough detailed analysis, but, but there's a, there's a process, right? And that we, in, in a situation where township, urban forester, or an arborist confirms that there is oak wilt present on a property, that we notify the property owner by certified letter, we give them approximately 30 days to do it, to, to, you know, facilitate the abatement themselves. And after 30 days, if they do not, the township then, you know, contracts or has it done in-house and absorbs those costs, issues the invoice to the property owner. And after a certain period of time, if they don't submit payment, then it, it gets processed as a municipal lien. And that is a, and that is the process that's referenced in the ordinance, Chapter 25, under the hazardous, the section, there's a section where that's referenced in the ordinance, which is inconsistent to how it's described in the Resolution 2016-32. And so if, if asked for a recommendation, I would support that and I can appreciate wanting to, to support those that may be more socially, economically disadvantaged. I think once we get into that type of framework, we subject ourselves as a municipal entity to, to, for, for various people to ask for considerations for subsidy programs. And I would also suggest that we may even want to consider staffing levels to be able to facilitate such programs and ensure that we're doing it in accordance with state and other programs that provide subsidy programs. I'm in favor of those types of programs personally, but I think from a municipal standpoint, I would just suggest that we go through and have our proposed framework, if that's the route the board wanted to go, and have it legally reviewed with recommendations.
Thank you.
But what you've stated is not inconsistent with what I was thinking. Maybe I said it in a lot more words, but at the end of the day, example, five trees on a lot, 22 trees, they've got a problem. Our arborist says, or our urban forester says, hey, we got a problem here, we need to fix this. The owner gets 30 days to, to abate, fix it, fix it. If they don't, township arborist has, is, in our ordinance, they're, they're, they're going to take care of it after 30 days. And so in that example, it's And so in that example, it's, I think you said 4,000 and 10,000, so I'm going to round up and say $15,000 worth of work. And right now, the township is on the hook. And so if we were to make a small tweak, the township would do that $15,000 worth of work, but it would be a lien on that person's house, or they come up with a check and say, okay, here's my $15,000 out. They pay the township back. And I think that's what I was saying from a framework perspective was the right thing to do for the township to be able to help. Omari's got 10 trees on his lawn, he, I don't have $15,000 in the couch cushions.
Right.
Thank you, Madam Manager and Larry, our forester, for taking care of that. I can, you know, give you some money out of my paycheck or squirrel something away for a few years, and then here you go, township.
Thank you.
But I think that that's a good framework. That's where my brain is.
Okay.
Just going to say, you have a question for Mr. Keough?
No, I think he's got some.
We'll just give him questions. Go ahead, Mr. Keough. Any feedback you had to share on this?
When this whole issue came about, it had a lot of discussion. This was not something that was easily solved back then, and it clearly is not necessarily something easily solved now, especially when you look at the nature of our township and the fact that we have such a difference between our urban area, suburban area, wards two and three, and ward one, when it comes to the issue of trees. One way of looking at the oak wilt situation is, for a homeowner or a landowner, this is an unforeseen liability, not planned on, like an earthquake, like a hurricane, et cetera. When one looks at this 30-day response financially, for us in the western end of the township, that could be immediately devastating. We rely on our oak trees to feed our turkeys, our deer, and so our oak trees are important to us out there. The 30-day kind of turnaround just is not what I would consider to be reasonable, regardless of how we fund it, if we expect the homeowner or the landowner to respond in 30 days, you know, with some kind of financial participation. Add to that the fact that in some cases, and we'd have to look at the zoning, or the plot plans, but we're talking about individuals who own hundreds of acres of woodland, not five acres, not two acres, but hundreds of acres. And so that's an equity issue that was discussed to a certain extent. The option of a lien on the property, especially in the western end of the township, but I'm not dismissing the $400,000 homeowner either, but the lien on farmer property with regard to these affects a whole business model that our farmers have with regard to borrowing money on bad years, et cetera, and going to the banks. And, I mean, you're talking about impacting on a business model, not a homeowner model. Okay? So when you talk about liens, it has a different impact. I really feel as though if we're going to have this be a township-wide thing, we really need to talk to, have a discussion with some of the people as a group who live out there and what that impact does represent. I don't think it's fair for staff to carry that burden of trying to develop something for the whole township, even looking at other models that exist. I really think we've, we've got to, we've got to have some kind of a discussion with the people who live out there who are going to be impacted. I would probably opt for the township putting aside, just like we do with regard to ag preservation, putting aside a piece of the budget annually that stays in a fund that will then accrue to a certain value when you choose to stop it, that will address, that way, you know, everybody does participate in that regard, but we don't try and differentiate between ag land, urban land, a house plot at all. Yeah.
I guess I'm confused because oak wilt doesn't distinguish between. So 30 days seems perfectly reasonable to me because you want to stop this as soon as possible. So of course you would want to get in and stop this.
And I don't, I don't have a problem with initiating an action within 30 days, but I have a problem, at least I'm bringing to your attention, the issue of starting to deal with the owner of that land, having 30 days to get engaged with the cost of taking care of it.
I thought 30 days was referring to the time it took to get rid of the oak, the distressed tree.
30 days. So the, in the scenario that was presented earlier in the model from Patton Township is that the township would notify the landowner of the infected or confirmed oak wilt on site, and they would have 30 days to take action. And absent of action, the township would take action and then they would facilitate that municipal lien process and, you know, I'm happy to comment and respond when the board.
Yeah, no, I get it. And I think that's sort of what we were getting at was, but this is going to go for public hearings, et cetera.
For all residents in all wards to be able to comment.
Right.
Well, I think, I think we need more than just hoping residents show up to that public hearing in order to gather what the real impact is. For example, you know, most people don't even think about how liens impact on our property in the western end of the township, especially our farm property. It directly impacts our ability to deal with banks when it comes to crop insurance, when it comes to buying machinery, and when it comes to buying the seed for the next year's crop. I mean, those are big business decisions. And I would hate to have it get to the point where, where, you know, we start getting into attorneys and all of this other stuff in terms of what you have the authority to do and don't do, you know, with regard to something that is an act of nature. So I just, you know, I comment because I'm here and you're discussing it, and we're not asking, you're not being asked for a action. Thanks, Al.
Thank you.
Yeah, no, no action at this time, just, just discussion and thinking back, like, oh, yeah, yes.
We're clarifying while we're not asking for action, we are soliciting comments from the board to present a ordinance amendment for your consideration at a future meeting. And I don't disagree with the feedback that we've heard. I think opportunities for all landowners, all property owners, because I think that this would have an impact, a municipal lien on any property with any individual that would find this to have some hardship. I think hearing from all of those property owners is certainly an approach, and we would ensure that we put information in our newsletter and our, you know, our e-newsletter and our website, really encouraging residents from all locations within the township who would see this as a potential economic hardship, so the board could hear that feedback. I think to Mr. Keough's point, this is, this is something that's going to impact not just farmers, but, but all landowners. And it already, in some ways does, in terms of how we apply the violations and penalties. And so I think you probably would hear from residents pertaining to that particular piece of it too. But yes, the financial presentation of management of this public safety or public welfare issue is important. And I heard Mr. Keough comment about, you know, the animals eating. I think, I think one thing to remember is that the oak wilt mitigation is in support of our environmental stewardship goals, but also just a natural reaction to what happens when there's infection of oak wilt. Trees will die. The goal is to take action with some urgency so we can minimize the loss of oak trees because oak trees are so important. And so that's why you find from staff, including myself, as your manager, wanting to bring this forward for some action that represents the board's interest.
Yeah, just, just thinking of like, I, and I'm not, not an expert on this, but, you know, I was wondering, like, with single-family homes, you know, is this, is managing, I guess the disease of oak wilt, is that something that may be covered under that person's homeowner's insurance or some type of policy? As we've kind of learned from other disasters and happenings, sometimes it's best to just tuck, tuck through the what-if scenarios with your insurance agent and see if there is ways to be covered. At least, if that was an option, it'd probably at least eliminate some of that financial burden on the individual homeowner. I share in the concerns of like the liens, especially with the family farm. It's, it's not like a big box business where they got like billions of dollars of revenue that if they're hit with like some unexpected, like tens of thousands of dollar bill, you know, corporate office catches a check and it's paid for. With the family farm, like, yeah, sometimes a $10,000, $20,000 unforeseen circumstance isn't necessarily easily something that can be paid for, especially if that farmer is having to take out financing just to plant a crop with the hopefulness that that crop yields enough to pay for that financing of the seed and materials, plus give them maybe a little bit more of a profit at the end of the, the growing season. And yeah, it sounds like based on the discussion, there may even be opportunities for the township to kind of explore what are some options if a person needing to manage oak wilt has a financial hardship but needs to get it taken care of, but may be able, like Mr. Patterson was sharing, maybe, maybe make payments over time to, you know, treat their property. So more to explore.
Thank you. I've taken notes and.
And Mr. Keough's back.
Just one, one kind of final comment. The how we get there could be as important as getting there. I don't necessarily agree with staff with regard to procedure to get there. I don't think it's in the best interest of this discussion and the citizens to have the staff put together a proposed ordinance and then ask people to respond to it. I think it's better in this kind of a discussion for the staff to engage the people that it affects and come up with a collective ordinance as a result of that discussion before an ord, see, once you all get it in ordinance form, I gotta tell you, you've spent an awful lot of time with the staff doing that. Plus, if you have a significant amount of people who have some concern, now you've got to decide whether you want to join staff side or the public side. How do we do that? I say let's do that upfront. And then we present to board a resolution or an ordinance that is agreeable. I've got to tell you, none of you were here when it happened, but this township wrote the rural agricultural zone by committee, not by staff. And we did that as an explanation of how that occurred, occurred over months, and that ordinance and that zoning ordinance has lived a very good life. And staff wasn't asked to write it first and then let us respond. We did it together. And that's what I think maybe this kind of a discussion needs to be as well. Just my thought.
I'm deep in thought on that.
I'll be willing to make a motion here in the.
Yes.
Okay. I move that the Board of Supervisors authorize legal advertisement to hold the public hearing to amend chapter 15.
Do you want to try that again?
Isn't that what it is?
That's the next item.
Oh, God. I'm sorry. We don't have one.
There's not a recommended motion? It is more.
Yes, there's actually no action on this.
Factual information, and so the board would like to. So it's been legally advertised for you to take action tonight, but I'm not, the staff is not recommending that you do one way or the other. We are presenting to the board some observations for you to decide if you would like to proceed with a discussion with an ordinance amendment, or if you just want to give your feedback for drafting an ordinance amendment, or do nothing right now.
I think we should bring this back to the next board meeting.
Right, for discussion.
For discussion.
That's an option as well.
And I think I'll certainly do some homework and have some conversations with constituents. I don't know, maybe some folks from staff might have some time, maybe our arborist can be able to talk to some folks he knows out west that he can, on larger lots to talk through it. I just think there's an opportunity to have some discussions between now and two weeks from now, at which point we will take some action in a couple, we should take some action in a couple of weeks with some, with some homework here. So.
I, I like that idea because it, like, at this point, I think we're like ready to go to the drawing board. It's just, who goes to the drawing board?
No. I think, so I've tossed out a framework, and I think it's the same framework that Patton had done or something like that, but news to me. So this is good, we're aligned. I've got, there's a framework, at least I've tossed out.
And it's in our ordinance, just for.
Well, fair enough. It's in ours, but there's some inconsistencies with it.
With the resolution. There's inconsistencies with the resolution compared to the ordinance. It's already in chapter 25 that we follow the process that you've defined as a framework. It's the resolution 2016 dash 32 that presents the inconsistencies between the two policies.
Ah, so that's where I got it. Okay. So there's some conflicting policies that we're, that are ultimately, we're going to kind of remove the conflict, if you will, potentially. I just think we've got to do a little bit more homework on exactly what that is, the way in which we remove that conflict, the talking to some folks that are, hey, yeah, I'm going to, this is going to kill my business, or whatever the case. So I'd like to absolutely have that, you know, that understanding for myself. So I think coming back in a couple of weeks will be helpful, the same discussion with some action for next time.
Absolutely. And again, I think I mentioned earlier, I don't disagree with Mr. Keough. I think that landowners throughout all three wards should be given an opportunity to be aware of the situation and be able to provide comment, and understanding that there are those that particularly have bigger lots, bigger property parcels and more trees, and might have more of a vested interest, given that farming is their, is their sole source of income. And so we can certainly even try to put more information in our e-newsletter as well as on our webpage, really encouraging residents to be present at our next discussion, that, you know, when we bring it back, possibly for the August 19th, or perhaps the first meeting in September, we can try to really push out information to encourage our residents to come and be part of this. we can try to really push out information to encourage our residents to come and be part of the discussion during public comment under that agenda item. So you can hear their comments and then provide an informed recommendation on amendments that will inform staff to write the amendment to the policy. If I'm hearing you correctly, I, that's the way you would like to proceed. Bring it back for discussion with full board and really push out to encourage folks to come and give feedback on the agenda item.
Yeah.
Has, has the tree commission sort of had this discussion about this?
We can refer it back, well, we can refer it to the tree commission or solicitor just made this suggestion, even bringing the township urban forester to be part of the discussion to be able to answer questions, particularly with the technical expertise that he has. So we can set up the next discussion with the board. You know, I think there's the technical side of things, but then there's just the policy side of things. And right now this is to address a potential, well, I wouldn't say a potential, a gap in the policy. And this board is, while we're already doing the corrective legislative policy update, is being asked to review the policy gap and determine if you would like to take any additional action besides the corrective legislative policy. Again, while we legally advertise for you to have the option to take action this evening, there was a conscious decision here not to give you a recommendation, but to give you the facts and the observations for you to proceed how you would like to on this policy amendment, the potential for a policy amendment.
Yeah, and, and I think the big ask here is, we already know, and I, just board and public, we already know that we raised taxes last year as a result of the budget, which included an increase in fire and police. Those were shared services that were for me non-negotiable. We need to make sure those are fully funded. And so when we put away money for things like this where, all right, is that a thing that's going to affect the entire township? Probably not. Is it going to affect a few cheese here and there occasionally? Probably so. And so do we want to raise everyone's taxes for this? I, I think, I, I don't know that that's the thing. And so when we start chipping away at the budget, for me, this is the first thing that's on the list. Like, no, we don't need tree wilt. Boom. Folks can take care of their own properties. And if they need help, okay, fine, we'll consider it. But that's where my brain is as far as budgeting this, for this fall of the shared services that are non-negotiable, you know, must-have, should-have, nice-to-have. This is a nice-to-have to me. And, and we're, we've probably got to go away from that if we're going to continue on this path toward fiscal evenness fiscal, just not. Sustainable fiscal posture. Thank you, James.
You're welcome.
All right, that's mine.
And, and thank you for mentioning the, the website, a website article. I was going to bring that up. So, all right, I think staff has enough to go off on that. So that will move us into Item 78, which is a discussion for authorization to post legal advertisement for a public hearing on an ordinance amendment resolution of the Township of Ferguson, Senator County, Pennsylvania, establishing minimal, minimum operational standards and service area limitations for approved towing companies and storage facilities pursuant to Chapter 15, Section 504 of the Township Code of Ordinances. And I will recognize the township manager.
Thank you, Chair. Provided with the agenda is a narrative. In short, the Board of Supervisors is being asked to review and discuss a proposed amendment to Chapter 15, Section 504, the municipal code ordinance relating to the regulation of vehicle immobilization, towing and impoundment. The purpose of the proposed amendment is to modernize and clarify administrative responsibilities, ensure consistency with the Ferguson Township Home World Charter and the municipal code, strengthen operational standards for approved towing companies and storage facilities. These items presented for discussion this evening. Should the board reach consensus, the staff will seek, you know, authorization to coordinate with township solicitor to prepare and publish the required legal advertisement. I will share with you that this has gone in front of the solicitor for her review with no comments on the proposed amendment to the ordinance. This proposed ordinance amendment actually comes as a result of Ferguson Township Police Department needing to add in some additional towing companies to the list. And it's just taken some time because of the amendment that was made in 2017 to this particular chapter. There were changes that required that each time we needed to add, remove, or make any changes related to the towing, impoundment, or immobilization, that it, it go in front of the Board of Supervisors. So it just, it holds up that process and that immediate action. So we have it in front of the board for presentation and discussion this evening with hopes that we can get it back on for August 19th prior to the students returning and us having a larger number of residents living in our township. So we can process that change to our towing ordinance list. And that's just one of the items presented in the narrative, as well as a memo that I wrote to the Board of Supervisors outlining additional details with a more concise version of the, of the need for the change. But also the ordinance amendment would also offer updated insurance and bonding requirements for approved vendors and mandated compliance with township adopted towing and storage fee schedules. And then also provided within the ordinance suggests that the option for the board to establish minimal operational standards and service area limitations by resolution. So that is also an item that would be presented for the board's consideration and adoption at the August 19th Board of Supervisors regular meeting. Happy to answer any questions that you may have. Solicitor also may provide some assistance with answering questions as it relates to the legal review and changes. And provided with the agenda is a recommended motion.
All right, this is how I move that the board authorize the legal advertisement to hold a public hearing to amend Chapter 15.
Ms. Amari, second.
A motion by Ms. Stevens, second by Mr. Patterson. Any board discussion on this?
Does anybody know why this was in place originally as it was 2017?
We went through the minutes and notes. We cannot identify. There is no factual written documentation that explains why the change was made. There have been comments suggested by those that have had long tenure here in the police department, which I will suggest you can ask those questions to Lieutenant Lewis at the next meeting, or I'm certainly happy to bring that forward if I can provide that written reference from those in FDPD. But I, from the administrative observation, was unable to identify or understand why that amendment was made in 2017.
Okay. Is there any other, outside of towing, is there anything else from a approved vendor list that comes before the Board of Supervisors?
Not to my knowledge.
This is the only one.
There was a service that was a real popular service that I believe recently went out of business. Was it? Tennis towing went out of business. And they were regularly used for a period of time.
Well, no, other, so there's a vendor list for towing that comes to the board to add and remove.
I think. Currently, based on the 2017, well, that's a, it comes to the board for contract purposes.
We don't have a vendor list for other services.
But no, we do not, to my knowledge, we don't have a vendor list, no. What comes to the board is generally based on allocation of funds. Correct.
So just from a consistency perspective, there's no vendor list that should be coming to the Board of Supervisors. This, maybe there's some anecdotal stories about why this happened. I am interested to know why, because it could have been a very good reason or getting ready to, without learning from the past or getting ready to repeat it. If we repeal or if we make these changes, I, I would be interested to know. But, but I'm, I guess for the, in the interest of moving forward, I'm okay with advancing this, but I would like to know.
I can provide you with any written reference that those that have had long tenured service here are willing to provide and read that to the Board of Supervisors. And I would also say anyone that is watching this evening that has a explanation that they are comfortable presenting from previous positions held at the township, they're invited to participate at the next public hearing and/or submit communications directly to me or the solicitor to help us understand. And we'd bring that forth at future meeting.
Is there anyone in the public that was here in 2017 that knows about this towing list?
I'm almost kind of curious if we can get the tape from CNET now to see what happened at that meeting.
So I think, no, I can share with you, there is inconsistencies with the HRC and municipal code. And I would strongly recommend that for operational purposes, at the very least, that we proceed forward with making the amendment and we would advertise to have a public hearing held at the next meeting. And anyone is welcome between now and then to provide any explanation. And I'm happy to share that with you if presented prior to the meeting. Thank you.
Yeah. All, so, yeah, we have a motion on the table, so all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say no. Motion passes. 79, we have a board member request discussion in, on accessory dwelling units, ADUs. I was going to say, you want to open this up, Ms. Stevens? I.
No, I, I guess I just wanted to, because we'd had so much public input before about this issue, this topic and housing in Ferguson Township. I would like to get the conversations going. And I think I'd even propose maybe a, a joint meeting with the planning commission to figure out how we get this going. Look at it, start looking at our, our ordinances or, yeah.
Yeah, when I had received a board member request from you as well as Mr. Heller, as a matter of fact, you, both of you pretty much at the same time had brought pretty similar board, board agenda item requests. And I took time to look, look at both of them. As a matter of fact, I even explored into AI and I did receive Mr. Keo's remarks the other day because you'll notice attached to the agenda is literally the whole discussion I had with AI on this, where basically looked at both your emails and like tied in the themes and made, helped, helped me to draft a nice summary of the two board member requests. And, you know, one of the things that I had got out of there, joint board and planning commission meeting. And I think, I think those have been very beneficial in the past and I think that's a good idea on that one. Looked like there may even be opportunities and I guess this would go beyond that initial meeting, you know, possible economic impact studies, as well as even community, community engagement. I think there's also opportunities for policy refinement and those are in the pipeline. We're definitely trying to seek out grants and opportunities to be able to, you know, help refine our land use policies and ordinances, so.
Yeah, and just learning too, what, you know, some of the areas within the regional growth boundaries that haven't been developed, what we can do to, to encourage that development, so. Yeah, that's.
Encourage, encourage development, also, also thinking outside the box. You know, I, I think, I think, you know, there's new and emerging opportunities. It's just identifying them and also at times even being, being able to, this, kind of like sell them to those that may not necessarily be as familiar with certain practices or new and emerging things that maybe other parts of the country or even around the world are doing when it comes to, you know, housing.
Right, right. And I, I think it's important too that all voices are heard. I mean, you know, we've received some emails from, from younger generation, first-time home buyers who are interested in, and so to Bill's point about a community discussion, right? To hear, this is what we want. It's, it's not necessarily what is going to be the most profitable, but if, if you want to sell in this community, this is what our residents are looking for. These are the kind of homes we're looking for. You know, not everybody wants a 3,600 square foot mansion. Maybe we need smaller neighborhoods, et cetera, so, yeah. Starts with the discussion and, and to your point, being creative, seeing what's working in other parts where they have similar, because we're not the only one, of course.
Absolutely. Any thoughts, Mr. Patterson? Just going to say, we.
Many.
I, yeah, I could, I could go on, but I think we, I, yeah, I agree with a lot of the goodness here, but maybe some public comment here today.
Yeah, I was going to say, we, you know, if you're, if you want to, we can definitely open the floor to some public comment. I know we've had some coming in and I was going to say, I've also recognized some, some, some of those in attendance have been frequent flyers on this matter and, you know, definitely appreciate your participation and welcome your inputs. So if anyone wants to kick off the conversation, feel free. Otherwise, Bill's going to start for you.
When I saw, when I saw the AI-generated document, and it was, it was reasonably obvious to me, but I handed it to my wife first without saying anything and said, read the first three pages and then I have a question. And the question was, is this, because she works at the university and deals with AI infractions. I asked her, I said, is this an AI document? And she said, definitely. I, I want to say, I hope you shared this with everybody.
It, it is in the agenda pack. It is shared with everyone.
Because I feel it is a very well put together response. And when I look at the staff time necessary to design and develop this document versus having AI be a participant in doing it, I think that is a huge step forward. And, and I would encourage staff, if we don't own such an opportunity, we ought to spend some money to buy one, buy, however you own AI, I don't know. But, but this is good. When you talk about meeting with the planning commission, I guess I'm required to say, while I am a planning commission member, I am not speaking for the planning commission in my comment here. That's a requirement. I would like to suggest that maybe the chair, the manager, the director of planning, and maybe I would volunteer to get together to talk about a format for this kind of a discussion, because it can go all over the map in terms of accessory dwelling units. I think in order to have it be productive, even if we don't come to any hard, fast conclusions, but in order to have it be productive, I think we have to have some kind of guardrail for the discussion. And, and I certainly would be willing to be part of a small committee to talk about what those guardrails might be in order to have some eventual action developed with regard to it, but not necessarily as a result of that joint meeting itself. Good job, Jeremy. Thank you for doing that. I think, I think that AI, I don't know whether she has a name or he has a name, but I think they did a marvelous job of putting this together. So thank you.
Yeah, I, I don't think that one has a name. Of course, it's just, yeah, they just call it Copilot. Of course, I was going to say, that's so basic, like we had like Siri, Google, Cortana, now we're just going with. Copilot, you know. I, I was going to respond to that, Mr. Keo, about the AI. I think it's a whole separate discussion for another day and I, I wouldn't, you know. And I wouldn't, you know, I, I wouldn't doubt that, you know, AI is something that's on the manager's radar as to, you know, where and when it may fit in as a resource in the township. I know as an HR professional, AI is definitely a big topic of discussion in the HR space, which has led to a lot of discussion on policies and implementation, where and when it can and cannot be used. And so totally a whole different, you know, discussion, but, you know, someday. With that, say, take, anyone else? Mr. White? For, for the record, I think, I think it was actually attached in the packet, or, well, we did receive your eight-page narrative. Not that you said you were gonna, you know, read it to us tonight, but, you know, we did receive it, and it was shared with the board.
Yeah, I was actually gonna start by saying, for this one, I do have statistics, actually. So I would love to talk about that. Yeah, so we can break up residential into the four different zones. We have the PRD, the TSD, the, so many zones. But if you go in and you hand count, and you're bored at work like me, you can derive out how many parcels are zoned, single family, or are like single family, but are just in a different zone. So for those tax parcels, we have, I did revisions on the numbers that I came up here a couple of weeks, months ago, we talked about. But anyway, single family, 4,129 tax parcels, two-family, 422, townhome, 496, multifamily, 217. For the areas that it makes up, single family, 7,659, two-family, 236, townhome, 311, and multifamily, 198. So what I'm getting at with this is like, we already have a lot of land with single family development. A lot of that land can be used. And so I'd like to talk a little bit about like, oh, what would ADUs do? And to keep it short and sweet, I'll just go off the bullet points that I have in that little eight-page thing. So it'll increase the competition in the rental market by reducing the market share of the larger monopolistic property management firms in the region, and increase the market share, or the supply of the smaller, oh, I'm trying to find a way to phrase it. I have it right here. Increase the market share of smaller suppliers. Right now, we don't really have a lot, because you kind of need economies of scale to build up large projects. It'll increase the fiscal stability of the township by encouraging more dense development that reduces vehicular dependency and thus reduces roadway maintenance costs in the long run, and increasing potential cattle riders, enabling positive externalities in the western end if supply increases enough, and further reducing our tax burden on residents out in the western and for those road maintenance development projects. It'll diversify our economy by increasing disposable income as a result of that increased competition I previously mentioned, further increasing the demand for smaller scale contractors, reducing future land use, preserving existing sectors of the economy. It'll promote less transient and thus more stable tax base by providing more affordable housing that does not price out new entrants into the workforce, and allows for a healthier community with more interpersonal interactions for those who desire it, or the hermits can just kind of walk past each other. And finally, it fills in the missing low to middle income housing options. I do have statistics on that, but it's very boring, so I'll just say that it's not there. I bought my double wide for $180,000, and I don't think it has the length of the mortgage left on it, so that's cool. Things that are in price ranges for people of my generation are either bad or just not there. So it'll inject the innovation that's drastically needed in a market where every single family McMansion home looks like a copy paste from a more modern Sears catalog. It's not stable for our region, because the more you spread out like that, the more cars you get on the road, the more taxes you have to levy. And nobody wants to have those conversations about tax increases, and this is a way to avoid that. The types of houses I'm talking about, we all kind of know what they look like. They're the ones that are behind the Dollar General. I don't know who's buying that. I don't, $800,000, $700,000, who's qualifying for that at these rates? And, oh yeah, if rates drop, then we're probably going into a recession, so that's not going to be good anyway. So we need to start planning for the inevitable recession, because that's just how our economy goes. We just go into recession sometimes. This will increase the stability of the township, should we be in a recession, by having those more affordable options and more disposable income for residents. There is a more nuanced discussion to be had about how the path dependency of building those types of homes could be a potential contagion factor analogous to that of previous recessions. Eventually, developers aren't going to be, they're going to have to be selling at a loss. And what might that look like when large developers are taking massive losses? Because nobody can afford the homes they're building. The ADUs might fix that. So that's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening, Tyson Daniels, I'm a resident of Ferguson Township, and I'm a member of Centennial PA United. We are always in favor of having more supply for housing in our areas. And Ferguson Township has a lot of potential for developing housing. And ADUs seem to be a good way to diversify that supply in a way that will minimally impact larger scale things. And I think it'd be a great idea to amend some zoning things to allow that. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Really appreciate that last comment on zoning. I know that we have a desire to do kind of a really massive overhaul, because it's necessary. Lot of conflicting language within our current documentation, you know, just some things that are wrong. And so we need to, we need to correct them. And I know there's a laundry list of things already. And to the extent we can start to correct some of those items, I think that I'd like board support here to start correcting while we gear up and look toward and find funding for that, that larger overhaul. And so if there are, you know, some small ways, some small things that we can do to make progress, I think that would be my ask. And, and, you know, maybe that's a ask of staff, is, you know, what's the thing that we can do in October? I don't know, in two months to move, to advance something by, say, waiting two, three years, five years for a complete overhaul? Which even in the last overhaul, we have what we have today, and it wasn't perfect. So I don't, I don't know that waiting five years for imperfection is, is the way to go.
I might just suggest to the board, and really the public, that this issue is not a Central County State College issue. The National League of Cities and the home builders have put together a housing accelerator. You can go online, you can get the information on that program. They're looking at actions going on across the country. There's great, like, there's a whole project in Minneapolis that has specifically dealt with ADUs. There are projects all over California dealing with ADUs, both the pros and cons. I think, Bill, your point about what's the parameters of the conversation is very important, because there are people on both sides of the issue, or there are concerns about it. But I think there are resources out there that, you know, staff, or if you end up getting this grant, a consultant could kind of access and use that to help them develop. I mean, literally, there is ordinance language. I realize it has to be modified for Pennsylvania, but there is language that could be adopted. What isn't, what is an ADU? What are the, what are the various definitions out there? What are some of the limitations on the definitions? So you can manage some of the sort of folks who may not always want to have an ADU on a property adjacent to them. And, and promoting that, promoting those more often than not as infill development as opposed to expanded development. So rather than worrying about greenfields, we're looking at how can we expand that where we already have existing development? So I would really, you guys are a member of the league, you can get the information, you can share it with your community. There's a lot of good viable information in that housing accelerator. And, and there are a lot of good resources that come out of that. As I said, communities that have done it, as I said, the national home builders have been looking at this, and they've been actually modeling ordinances to, to their membership, but it's available to the public, right? It's, it's available on their website, so.
I, yeah, I thank you for that. I also want to just acknowledge too, that ADUs are permitted by right in RA and R1. Or, excuse me, RA and RR. So these are, so it's already permitted by, by right. So I would, I think it's already been shared that we are doing a, we've submitted a grant to have the opportunity for funds to offset the expenses to bring in a consultant to do a zoning amendment. I believe ADUs are permitted throughout the township. And so I think more education and understanding as to where and how folks can pursue under the existing ordinance, and that we address this as we proceed forward in discussions with our economic, our strategic plan for economic development, growth and innovation, as well as our zoning amendment that we anticipate to do next year. And that's what I would, and of course, I think all of the feedback that we received this evening was really helpful. And certainly, notes have been taken by both the planning zoning director and myself. And we will continue to collaborate and bring forward recommendations as, as we are able.
Is it possible to establish, like what Bill had suggested, a committee too?
I'm sure, I think that's great feedback, and I took all of those notes. I think right now, what you're seeing is that staff is, is under a significant amount of, you know, workload. I think this evening alone, we've identified several ordinances that need to come back for the board's consideration. And that doesn't just happen like that. Even with the tools such as AI, there are, there's still a review, a manual review that needs to be done by the, by the staff.
Right.
AI is certainly a helpful tool, but it's not to be used without careful consideration of its flaws.
Yeah, sure. Well, and I, I would wonder if this shouldn't be a regional conversation?
Thank you. And so this was the executive director of COG.
Yeah, I really think as a regional planning, it doesn't mean that everybody's ordinance ends up the same. I know that's not gonna happen, it hasn't happened in my lifetime. But in terms of how we look at the issue and where we might expand that, having some consistency in what we define as an ADU and how we use it would be very helpful, especially for developers, because they're looking into, they're developing in multiple townships. So then they know if ADUs are permitted, what an ADU is considered. And there, there are also implications, how you apply code, how you use those, what are the requirements? I mean, so, so this might be a good regional conversation. I know that they don't have, they have some issues on the planning side too, in terms of staffing, but I think it might be a good conversation there.
Right.
It's a great point, and the executive director of COG and I have had those conversations. And there were even managers included in some early conversations. But then, as we all know, there were some changes that happening, that happened at CRPA. And so that, the consensus that was being built to have that be a regional discussion kind of got put on hold. And we're also going through that. So I would say respectfully, it is on our list of items to, to bring forward. But I don't know that we will see a whole lot of movement in the next couple of months with budget here. We begin budget season tomorrow, actually, with conversations from an internal process. And we have several ordinances that are under review that are coming forth to the board. And we, as you know, our planning and zoning department, just like COG's planning and zoning agency, going through some staffing changes. So I think realistically, yes, this is something that we want to prioritize. We have it built into our discussions for strategic planning, for growth, economic development, growth and innovation. But I just want to acknowledge, yes, we are committed at a staffing level, but we also want to set some realistic expectations.
Thank you for that.
Yeah, and I like that regional plug, because as I have had conversations with other elected officials, I believe, you know, both you and I have heard, you know, of work going on in Pat's. And I know I've, I've had some conversations with those, even in college, talking about housing over there. As a matter of fact, it sounds like there's a lot of movement on the housing front over in a college township. Shout out to our former, former community planner over there, who's doing a phenomenal job. So, yeah, definitely agree on that. And Mr. Keo's back.
Two quick things. In the last month, I've had the pleasure and opportunity to be in two discussions where we are talking about a regional housing summit that involves not only elected and appointed ABCs and board members, et cetera, but also taps into the private sector where there is a huge amount of data that, that we have about housing options and the housing environment, not only for the current time, but also what it looks like in terms of the future. One second thing, Betsy. I am hopeful that a suggestion that I made about a month ago takes off. I too have lived a long life of everybody always saying we need to consolidate our zoning ordinances within the region. It has been a complaint of developers, of property owners for years and years and years, and it has never gone anywhere except to be a complaint. I had a recent discussion with the planning staff at the, at COG about our friend in AI. And I have asked them to take one zone that all of the region has, like an industrial zone, or a, a small business owner, and put all of them in an AI and ask the AI to spit out a regional plan. And I'm hoping that we're going to be able to use that AI option, because the human effort to tackle this issue is, failed miserably for multiple decades here in the region. And so I think we've got to go and think outside the box. But I am hopeful, Betsy, that we in fact might start to see a way forward with limited staff all over the place, a way forward to come up with some standardized zoning throughout the entire region by tapping into some of the abilities that AI might offer us. Just a couple of things that are happening.
Thank you, Bill. Any other board comments? I was gonna say, there was no action on this one tonight, but it did, did sound like, from your remarks, Mr. Patterson, from earlier, it sounded like you might be interested in bringing this discussion back up again. I know I would be interested in maybe having this discussion again, under, understanding right now we are in the middle of the summer season, and do have a couple supervisors out.
It's interesting, earlier beginning of this meeting, someone came up with a public comment and said, I can't get a phone call or email back in 48 hours. And in, in, and I'm like, you know, the next breath, I'm like, hey, we need to talk about getting a, you know, what can we do to amend the zoning ASAP? So do you think we need to give staff some time?
Yes.
To, to get kind of sea legs underneath with all the work that's gone in thus far, you know? And also call our friend AI. I think, Bill, we need to give it a name. And, and, I don't know, maybe there's some homework we can do, and, and.
I would agree, because we also, at least here in Ferguson Township.
at least here in Ferguson Township, you know, we have municipal elections, too, in November, so we'll have some change on the board, and, you know, so...
We also gotta adopt a budget.
But that, as well. So, I think it gives us a lot of time to research, but I would like it to not go away to the point that, you know, we shouldn't be pushing this too far out, because the impacts can be pretty severe.
Yeah. Yeah, you know, I guess we can do... I don't know what you think would be adequate for a follow-up? You know, maybe...
Well, I guess we're into budget season, so...
Every three... Give it 90 days?
I don't know that we give anything a timeline right now.
Okay.
Maybe September meeting, we can talk about it again. To then kind of see how things are going.
Yeah, and I'm good with not giving a timeline. I guess we just don't want to... We may not want it to get stale, or, you know, go too long, but, you know, just finding the perfect, perfect balance. So...
I mean, I'm happy to put it on for board discussion. When it gets integrated into the work plan, it's something that I will be able to provide to you at a later time. But at this point in time, it's not something that is in the immediate future for work plan at a staffing level. But if the board wants to continue the conversations, I'm happy to put that on the agenda.
True, and work plan's not like till December, going into... Well, we could even be as early as November. But, yeah. I think we're good on that, so, thank you. Any communications to the board?
I just had some. I want to thank you for staff. They put up the no parking sign in the neighborhood, and people are very excited about that. And then, I just had some discussion and complaints about an encampment that was in the woods off of the viro bike path, and some concerns about that. But it's been resolved as of now.
You had anything, Mr. Patterson?
All my communications were on the agenda items. Shared feedback that I've received. Thank you.
You're welcome. I did receive a communication regarding a water main break in the Deerfield neighborhood. Reached out to our State College Borough Water Authority rep who looped in the executive director on that. It appears the Deerfield neighborhood has had numerous water main breaks this year, which has caused several disruptions to that community. And the State College Borough Water Authority has elevated that portion of their system to possible replacement next year. So, it is an aging system that looks like it needs some attention. And we were also considering that particular neighborhood. It looked like we were able to even send that message along to the HOA of the community, which got, you know, that whole response from the Water Authority Executive Director. So, more to come on that, especially next year. If they do move forward with the water main replacement, they will actually be notified. Unlike a water main break, usually you don't get advanced notice, and you just lose water until the service is restored. But if they do go forward with replacing that system out there, they will be notified ahead of time, so that will be afforded to them. And I also did get a communication regarding the tenants' bill of rights, which I forwarded over to the township manager, so...
I have a question, Sintrees, about that. Water main break on Deerfield, is that the sort of thing that gets covered by Center Alert?
That would be a really good question for the State College Borough Water Authority, how they manage their communications when they have water main breaks. We can certainly send that over to Ford Stryker. He's our township representative and serves on the State College Borough Water Authority, but I wouldn't be able to answer that with confidence that it's correct.
Okay.
I do remember... Well, I guess it's a whole different thing, but I remember Center Ready posted something on X regarding a break back in, like, January. But I wasn't even aware of any of the subsequent water main breaks until a resident reached out and said, "Hey, we've had a lot of water interruptions." So, I guess the one that went through Center Ready was the result of, I guess, Senator County 911 actually got an influx of calls about no water service. So, they pushed that out through some of their communication channels just to alert the neighborhood, "Hey, there's just no water because the mains broke, and it's being worked on." So, yeah, good question on that one. Any other communications? You said all yours in the report. So, calendar items. Ag progress days is next week, so that will be exciting. Do visit our website. We do have some information out about possible traffic disruptions that will occur that week. And then, yeah, Penn State Fall Semester will begin on August 25th, so we are just weeks away from the students coming back. So, we'll look forward to that and probably even have many of them even in our meetings and planning commission meetings for civic engagement and educational studies. We definitely welcome them to join us. And if there is nothing else, I will have Patty introduce item number 10.
Motion to adjourn.
Do we have a second? All right, we're adjourned. Have a good evening.